Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Jim Akabachi. I'll be acting as chair. I'm also the clerk of this board. Our chairman is on Zoom and will be recognized as a member of the board tonight. But he's asked me to chair because even though a pitch is worth 1,000 words, my presence is worth 1,000 pitches. So to my far left, I have Troy Larson coming this way. Veronica Debonese. To my, I said to my left, I meant to my right. My other left. To my, to my real left and your right, if you're looking at it, Jacob Morrison, Richard Simples. The first thing we got tonight, as usual, we got some minutes from 5:10, 2022. I have reviewed them. Has anybody else had a chance to review them?
I looked at them. But I think that there needs to be one little change there.
What is it?
At the beginning, it says that it's the Conservation Committee meeting.
That's a small change.
The opening paragraph.
Details. I missed that. You know, conservation. Thank you. And we're going to change that to, somebody was doing a cut and paste. Z E.
We'll give her a pass tonight.
G E. Think that. I don't, okay. Other than that, any other changes? Can I have a motion to approve as presented with the minor modification?
So moved.
It's been moved. It's been moved and seconded by?
I'll second.
Veronica. All in favor, say aye. Troy.
Aye.
Veronica.
Aye.
Myself, aye.
Aye.
Jacob, thank you.
Aye.
It's unanimous. It's passed. Thank you. That's out of the way. Two minutes. Okay. Next item on the agenda, Rhonda Finnaman, 18 Ocean Ave. Anybody here for Rhonda?
No. I have one on Zoom.
You have one, you have somebody waving on Zoom? Can you put her up? Hi, Naz.
Hi, guys.
Good evening. Or good morning.
Oh, good morning.
It's at 1:30 over there right now in the morning?
30.
2:30. AM.
1:30.
1:30 AM.
3:00 AM.
Okay, we have somebody that, go ahead. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'm Anthe Pranjyatis, and I'm representing Rhonda, Rhonda Finnaman this evening. You have a letter from our engineer, GAF Engineering, requesting an extension, a one-year extension to the variance that was approved last summer. We're still working with contractors and getting construction cost estimates, so we need a little additional time. You should have a copy of the letter, as well as a copy of the decision in front of you from GAF.
I saw the letter via email earlier.
Okay.
Okay. Anybody on the board have any questions on if and why they need this extension?
No questions.
No questions. Yep. Go ahead, Naz.
I recommend six months, not a year.
I think I could agree with that. Anybody else?
Yep.
I'm seeing nods, nods, nods.
Would the, would the six months be too, too close for the, for the project? I mean, let's ask, let's ask to make sure that we're not creating.
One of the question, one of the questions I would have is when does the six months start? So the decision was granted July of 2023, 2022, excuse me. So we're asking for July of 2023 in the letter.
So, so you expire in July?
Of 2023.
Yeah. So Naz, would you be good with six months from July? July is.
I'm fine with that.
That would bring us into, that would bring us into Feb, I think if I'm doing it in my head quick, February of 2024. Is that correct? Or did I, is my head faulty?
January.
January?
As long, as long as they cut the trees and start working, they, they end. They gotta start doing some activities by six, within six months of January of July 23.
If I remember.
Right. Because of the location in the village, sorry, Mr. Chairman, we do not want to be doing any construction during the summer. This is on Ocean Ave, which is directly behind Onset Ave at the intersection of Stone Bridge Marina and Glen Cove. So very busy area for summer construction. So ideally, we'd be starting in the fall.
Could you hear her okay, Naz?
Right. But the fall of what?
The fall of 2023.
Yeah. So if I, so once you start, you're locked in. You're good.
Is there a particular reason that it's six months instead of a year?
I just have personal preference on variances not to be dragged. As it is, the structure, when I give it a year, you keep stretching. If it was, if it was a special permit, I don't have a problem.
Okay.
I mean, for a variance, you kind of go out of your way to grant a variance and keep expanding.
Sure.
I think it's healthy. That's all.
I'm definitely in.
Thank you.
The six months over the year, this is, if we all recall, a rather sensitive area. This entire neighborhood was up in arms and opposed to a project directly across the street. So I think six months, holding their feet to the fire a little bit. We gave you the okey-dokey. Let's get her, get her going. That's the way, I agree with the chair. So would you make that in the form of a motion, Naz?
Motion to more, motion to grant for six months.
Do I have a second?
That's from July, though, right?
Yep.
The date of the, yes.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna hold the motion for, for a moment before I let us vote. Is anybody in the room this evening or on Zoom that would like to speak on this matter? Within 10 seconds, it's for speak now or forever hold your peace. Everybody's quiet. The motion is still on the table. I have a second. Who seconded it? Did anybody second it?
I'll second.
Okay. It's been made by Naz, seconded by Richard. All in favor, say aye, starting with you, Troy.
Aye.
Veronica?
Abstain.
Abstain. Jacob?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Hey, Naz, you might as, you made the motion. You might as well.
Aye.
There you go. So I'm gonna say 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 1, 0. No, 5, 0, 1.
I think you need to have.
Veronica was on that matter back then, so it's 4, 0, 1.
Four, okay. 4, 0, 1. It still carries, but.
Yes.
Who was not, who's here that wasn't on it?
I wasn't.
Oh, okay. That's right. All right. So it's been.
Thank you.
Passed. Thank you. You can stay on Zoom and be entertained, or you can go back to your life.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Okay. Next up in front of us, continued public hearings, 1223 SHM Onset Bay LLC, formerly known as Onset Bay Marina and BODM, Inc., special permit, 18 Green Street, map 3, 1014. Before, before I let you go ahead and start spewing, I assume that most of the people in the room are here for this matter. Questions that were raised about why weren't we notified, et cetera, et cetera. Just by a show of hands, is there anybody in the room right now that feels they should have been notified, that were not notified? Okay. So I was told that the letters went out in time. Do you have green cards? Do I have green cards?
Chairman. Correct. Note, so what happened was, was there was an error on the list for one property. So after the following meeting, that person was here. I resent a notice with a continued public hearing to make sure they're notified. Everybody else's on the list is correct for the 300-foot abutters from and a butter. So the, the list is correct from the assessors.
The list, let me see which one I got here. 2022. Bear with us a second here. So this big one is not. Onset Bay, it sounds like. Okay. We're gonna keep these here. Okay. So your, your contention is that the letters went out and?
So after the miscommunication of the location of where the actual boat racks were originally, the, where the construction was, there was a question on the abutters list. There was an error on the abutters list for one that was removed that shouldn't have been removed, and one that was added that shouldn't have been added. That has been rectified. The one that was removed has been notified for the continued public hearing. The rest of the abutters list is for the, the 300 feet up from a butter to and a butter. And so the list is accurate.
Hang on. Let me just, I, I anticipated some of this, and I want to avoid anybody. Okay. Can you pass this over to him, please? Can you tell me if? This was sent via email. Can you, can you see all the green dots on that?
Yes.
Okay. Have all those green dots received?
I don't have the green card in front of me, but it's the a butter to.
I have them here.
Yep. It's the a butter to the a butter, and it's from where the project is actually being performed, which is at the bottom.
Are accurate?
I don't have the green cards in front of me. I can't, I don't have the list.
The green dots, that the.
It's the, it's.
Based on?
No.
No?
No.
Okay. So can you tell me which ones of those?
So if you look on the left where it says three, or at the bottom where it says 3.0 B, 3.0 B.
Yeah.
300 feet from that property.
3B. So the one with the red checkmark is good.
Yep. Checkmark, all the way to the one, that one. That's where it stopped.
So the one with the red checkmark and the question mark, that's where it stops?
Correct.
All right. So everything else up on Murphy Street?
I don't have it with me.
You don't believe?
It's from, no, it's the abutters, the abutters list from the assessors. What's in that is accurate. I went through with Mr. Buckland, and it is accurate.
So my question is, are all these up here that are probably the ones raising their hands?
Should know, because the project is happening at 18 Green Street, which is at the bottom. The other parcels are all separate.
May I ask why those parcels are separated?
No, you can't ask that. We're having a conversation, and you're interrupting it. Please don't do that again.
Those parcels are separate. They're not actually 18 Green Street, so it's not from that property. It's from the property where they're actually doing the work, which is at 18 Green Street, which is at the bottom, right next to the water.
Okay.
So it's from that property.
So I think that the argument that the neighbors are gonna give us, you can see where it's circled in red, correct?
Yes.
And everything that's in red is part of the Marina property.
But they're different parcels, so that's how the, that's how the abutters list is formed.
But they're, they're all different parcels?
Correct.
So they're not included in?
Correct.
Okay. Okay.
Sorry, everybody that was duly notified is correct.
Okay. So now the people that are sitting in the room, they're all raised their hands.
Excuse me. Can I just make one point? That we did send additional letters, letters out and had a meeting at Town Hall. We did that on our own, which took place last week.
But that's.
I'm apprised of that. What I'm trying to avoid here is us making a decision and somebody saying, I didn't get proper notice, and I was due proper notice, and you get a cease and desist, and tough taffy.
I think I could also elaborate a little bit for the chair, if you'd like me to, briefly. I brought the statute with me. I think it is helpful. There's a couple of phrases in the statute that I think would help the board.
I've been advised by Commissioner that you kind of have this under control.
Yes.
I just want to finish my thought with these.
Sure.
I know they're gonna raise their hands, and I know they're gonna be excited, so if I can, if I can lower the temperature a little bit before we get going.
Sure.
If I can't, and you can, I applaud you. So the folks that, that are sitting in the room that raised their hands, have you people seen this thing that came to me via, via email?
Nope.
Okay. Would one of you walk up here, please, and pick this up? Any one of you?
Yes, that's the.
Any one of you?
It's the email that I sent out. I believe that they all received that.
Do you take that back there and share it with all the people with their hands up, so they can see what I'm saying when I say it? Are you people all from, what's that, Murphy Street over there?
Maple.
Maple, that's Maple Street, the, the next street over. Okay. Is anybody here that raised their hand that's not from Maple Street? What's your street, ma'am?
Green Street.
Green Street? Pardon me?
Director Butter.
You're Director Butter, and you're on Green Street. I know where Green Street is here.
Number's 12.
Your number, your address is 12, or your lot number?
My address, so.
He's notified.
Is that 260?
He's on the list.
What is it?
The chair, Jimmy.
Sorry, Nazzy, but.
The green cards are in the back of the file.
What is it?
Look on the back of the file. The green card should be on the back of the file.
She got it, yeah. What's your name? Good point, Naz.
Rebecca Hemslay.
Rebecca Hemslay. Did I get an email from you?
Several.
Okay. Oh, several.
Well, today.
You sure your name's not Karen? It's a joke. Several. Okay, Rebecca. So Rebecca Hemslay. Let's see if she got one sent to you.
Not appropriate. Not appropriate.
Well, if you want to go straight appropriate, people, we can do that. I like to throw a little sense of humor in. If you are offended, I apologize. Wasn't, it meant is intentional.
No, it isn't.
But if you want to go by the book, boy, I can do it.
I have a copy of the abutters list that was sent out. If you'd like to. That's what is from the assessors. That's the red checkmarks.
I don't see Rebecca on the list or on a green card, for the record.
About the receipts, Jim. The receipts, not the green card, even the receipts.
Hang on a minute, Naz. Would you pass this down to Rebecca and ask her to tell me what lot number is hers? Rebecca, could you, could you tell me your lot number?
I can't. It says C. 60.
Should we have her come up to the mic, so we can get?
That's all right. That may not help you. Huh? That's all right. Well, I'm gonna repeat what she says. What is, it's not on there?
It's not.
I have the assessor's parcel for her lot, Mr. Chairman. It's on the assessor's list.
What, it's on the?
Yep. Certified abutters list, so it has 3A-3-6-point-C, 12 Green Street.
Six what?
I can show you by location where I found it on the map.
Come on up. Show me.
She is in a butter?
If I may, Jim, Jim, if I may, while the council is showing you that.
Okay, I got it.
Hold on, hold on. She's, yeah, she's this one right there. So that's the butter, that's the abutters, the butter, I don't know which one that is over here.
Well, if she's, if she's this one.
Yeah, she's that one right there, 12.
Let's do, let's see the, what is it? Let's find out.
It's on the assessor's.
It is, it, on the assessor's list. So you're thinking it's this one?
I think so. This was on the GAF, so that's how I found it.
Could you come up? It's worth taking a few minutes, folks. Is this you here, this orange one?
I believe that's Tim, who's next to me, who also.
Okay. Which one's you?
I believe it's this one. That doesn't have a.
It doesn't, well, it's on a different map. See, if you, if you look at the town, they break them out and put them on different maps. Maple Street, near the main street.
That's her right there.
It's Green Street. There we go. This is probably you here.
It doesn't show up on his map very well. It's weird. Yep. That's 12. She's on the list.
So which one's you? Okay. So not this.
No, that's Christine. She's on.
So you're this. Okay. All right. Thank you. And you say she's on the list?
She is on the certified abutters list, yes, Mr. Chair.
And you believe she was mailed?
I, I have no reason to believe that she wouldn't have been mailed. Correct, yeah.
Okay.
And you, I think she was at the very first meeting, and she was at the neighborhood meeting, and now she's here, so.
Okay. No, I, I got you.
Were you at the first meeting?
No, I was not.
No, okay.
The good news is, during the first meeting, we stopped so that anybody like you would get a chance. And so you've got your chance, and you've sent your multiple emails. And I don't know if, if you and, let me see. If you and Tammy Young share the same attorney or just the same mindset, because your emails are so close to each other in structure and wording. But I've got them, and I've read them. Thank you. So. Hi, are you waving at me, or did you want?
No, I can say last time, and I still have.
That's great. That's, you were here last time, and you're here tonight, but we haven't opened this up to the public yet. We're still dealing with the applicant. You'll get your turn, sir. That's the second time I've had to ask you not to interrupt us. Third time, I'm gonna ask you to leave. There is a point in this hearing where I'll say, is there anybody here from the public that would like to speak? I haven't uttered that yet. I've addressed the public to get some things out of the way. Are you okay with that?
I am, Michael.
Nice of you to agree. Now, please be quiet and let us have our meeting. Thank you. Go ahead.
Mr. Chair, would you like me to address the, any further information on the notice requirements?
Hey.
Are you satisfied?
I want the board to have as much information as they, as you deem necessary.
Okay.
For us to make a decision.
So just, just looking at the statute itself, it's 48, Section 11 of the zoning statute. Parties and interests are defined as the petitioner, abutters, owners of land directly across the public or private way, and abutters to a buzzer, abutters to a butters within 300 feet of the property. So if the abutters property is three, more than 300 feet long, then there's no second a butter to a butter, because that person would be outside the 300 feet.
Within 300 feet?
Yeah. It's not everybody within 300 feet. It's just a butter. So if a butters to a butters only takes up 100 feet, that's okay. That you've notified the proper people. The, for the record, we did hold a community meeting, and we invited everyone within 300 feet from the site, and seven people came out of the, whatever, 30 or 40 people that we notified. As far as the assessor's list itself, the statute makes it very clear that the assessors maintaining any applicable list shall certify to the permit granting authority, you, or special permit granting authority, the names and addresses of parties and interest. That certification shall be conclusive for all purposes. You have a certified copy of the assessor's abutters list. The notices have been deemed sent by the planning office, which, for the record, is not delegable to the applicant. The mailing of these notifications has to be done by the town by, by.
I understand that, but thank you. Yes. Thank you for the clarification.
Sure.
And hopefully, everybody's listening.
Correct. So the, when we left before, we had that notice issue, so we discontinued the meeting and moved on to make sure that we hadn't misstepped in that regard. Before you, obviously, is the, is the plan to relocate the existing, reconstruct the existing non-conforming racks about 10 feet further away from the residential district, which is about 6.6 feet away now. It'll end up being 16.6 feet away. The board brought up a question about whether or not the height would be an extension of a structure along a non-conforming setback, or an extension or aggravation of a nonconformity, or a non-conforming structure. I wrote a letter to Paul and to Nazzy on May 3rd, indicating, sort of analyzing my review of your zoning bylaw. If you, and I would, it, it's in your packets, I believe. It's, the end result of that is that the, the concept that you are referring to at the last meeting is applicable under section, it's, it's under the previous section to the section that's applicable to us, which is 1350, non-conforming structures. That applies to the single and two-family homes. The section that we fall under is 1360, which is alteration or extension of other structures. Alteration of extension of pre-existing non-conforming structures other than single or two-family residences as defined in 1360, 1361, which is the, the beginning, the preamble sentence to that section. The first one, number one, is the alteration, extension, or structural change itself conforms to the current requirements of the zoning bylaw. That would be our position relative to the height, the change of the structure. The height change of the structure is not non-conforming now, and it's not going to be non-conforming when it's done, and it's a change or alteration that complies with your current bylaw. Now, for sake of argument, I suggested to the board that if the board saw fit to not agree with me that Section 1 applies, and that a special permit finding was necessary, i.e. the substantially more detrimental, my argument would be, although, my argument would be that by moving the structure 10 feet further away from the offending residential district, or increasing that non-conforming, or should say, lessening the non-conforming setback, and going up seven feet, that's my argument, that it would be not substantially more detrimental. We're not increasing the height on that same setback. We're not extending along the setback. We're not extending up at the setback. We're moving it back, then going up. Again, that's a backup position. The board has the authority to grant the relief that's requested by, look, by finding, by number one, which is that it is allowed under your bylaw as, and a change that complies with your bylaw. Now, with respect to the, the last, number four in that section, any proposed change that adds a new nonconformity, or aggravates or intensifies an existing nonconformity, will require a variance from the zoning vote of appeals. It was suggested at our last meeting that we would need a variance for this. So if you read closely this particular section, it refers specifically to the nonconformity. It doesn't confer, it doesn't talk to the structure, the nonconforming structure, or the nonconforming nature of the structure as 1650 does in the residential section of your bylaw. That talks about extensions of the structure and nonconforming nature of the structure. This is the nonconformity. The only nonconformity is the 6.6 feet from the residential district. Now, no one could say.
Setback.
The setback. That's it. No one can say that by moving that setback 10 feet further away from the offending district line is an, is a, you'd have to say it's, it's an aggravation, intensification, to an existing nonconformity, which would require a variance. No way. You're moving it away, you're lessening the nonconformity, so we're not, and we're not creating a new nonconformity. If we were moving closer to that line, absolutely, you'd have that issue. You'd have the, it's intensification of that nonconformity. It's an aggravation of the nonconformity, so we would need a variance. I could argue, too, that special permits can handle this outside of that by the case law, but your bylaw says you need a variance, so, but we don't need that. So that's the point of my letter, May 3rd, which, just to identify the issues that were brought up at the last meeting.
All right. Before you go further.
Sure. Sure.
On what the attorneys discussed so far amongst the board. Any questions?
I don't have any questions. I, I know what I think about it, but I don't have questions.
Yeah, I wasn't asking, yeah, just, you know, let's kind of either clear this up in our minds.
I like that. We'll take it one step at a time, so.
Chill the onion one layer at a time.
Perfect. Yep. I, I think that's.
Anybody got a question? And we come back to this after you're into another whole subject.
Happy to, happy to pause here and look for questions, or any explanation that.
You, you followed along, Naz?
Yes. And I have to agree on the first thing about the abut, the abut to the abut and the 300 feet. The counselor was absolutely right. Going back to his letter about the nonconformity, he's, I read his letter, he's right. That applies to the. applies to the one and two families. It does not apply to this zone. And I think, based on his clarification in his letter, I think he's right, it will be under a finding, will be a special permit.
Okay.
That's my opinion. That's my opinion.
And we have our building commissioner in the room as well. I'm going to look over at him and ask if he agrees. Just, you can just nod or shake. You're, you're also in agreement.
I agree with the attorney.
With the attorney, okay.
So if.
For the record, I just wanted that on the record.
Okay, so before we move on, I guess, from this subject, then I would like to actually state how I see that.
Please do, yeah.
Okay. So I do believe it's a variance, and it says a lawfully preexisting nonconforming structure. What is conforming from the setback? What would be a conforming distance from the setback, would be my first question, to have those racks? Because right now, it's six feet, and you're going to go to 16, but what legally, how far should you be, according to our, our bylaws?
Your bylaw requires that a structure in the Marine District be 50 feet from the nearest residential district.
Okay.
So it would be 50 feet.
Okay. So 16 is nonconforming.
Correct.
Right.
Yes.
So you would be creating a new nonconformity anywhere within that 50-foot mark, unless you stayed where you are? And you're increasing height, so we had this discussion the last meeting, that going up was, your premise was, it doesn't create an extension of the nonconformity. I believe that it does, and I believe the commissioner also agreed with that. Because it goes up, and it doesn't go lengthwise, doesn't mean it's not increasing or intensifying that nonconformity. So unless you are at 50 feet, if you increase the height of that rack, you are creating a new nonconformity, which requires a variance.
I think the attorney addressed that earlier in, in his presentation, when he, when he referred to the, to 1361. Are you on 1361?
Yeah.
First sentence. So, the original, the original application and the original interpretation was exactly what you're saying, but if you look at number one again, maybe, you know, you're entitled to, it, it's, 45 feet is the allowed height.
So I'm not referring to the height. I'm referring to the distance from the setback, the requirement to be setback.
And that's exactly what we're addressing.
Yep.
That's exactly what we're addressing.
So, if I may, the, the case law doesn't support the position that moving a nonconforming structure away, lessening a nonconforming setback creates a new nonconformity. It doesn't support that.
So I would disagree.
If, if, you can disagree, but you'd be disagreeing with the Supreme Judicial Court of Massachusetts.
Uh, no, I think it's interpretation of what that says. Any proposed change that adds a new nonconformity, or, there's an or there, or aggravates or intensifies. So you are not aggravating or intensifying by moving it back. That is correct, and I do agree with you there. But you are creating a new nonconformity.
Well, we'll have to agree to disagree, because your position is not supported by the case law.
Well, this isn't.
Just tell, I'm just saying.
That's your opinion as, that's your opinion, and mine is different.
Oh, it's not my opinion, it's the law in Massachusetts.
Well, I think it's interpretation of what we're reading. That's our bylaw that I'm reading.
I will rest on my May 3rd, 2023 memo on this issue, Mr. Chair.
Okay.
Okay.
Any, any more on the matter, or?
No, I just think that it requires a variance. That's my interpretation of that.
And anybody else on the board, Naz, any? I don't see him raising his hand. Okay. Go ahead, go forward now. We kind of like, we're done with that subject for now.
I don't, I honestly don't think we have anything left to talk about as far as the presentation goes, because the only nonconformity that we're dealing with is the 6.6 feet, and that being moved back, making it less nonconforming, is what the zoning code strives for, and what the case law strives for, in an analysis for protecting the rights of people who had structures in place prior to the adoption of zoning. That's exactly what the case law and the statute is there to protect. You can't make someone who has, has a preexisting nonconforming structure like this, tear it down and make it conforming. That's not the intent of the statute. The statute allows extensions and alterations. Your bylaw allows extensions and alterations of preexisting nonconforming structures, because otherwise, no one would be able to do anything with them, except tear them down, and they would lose their, their value of their property. If, in, in extreme cases, they could potentially lose the value of their property. So it, but I don't think there's anything else to talk about. The plans here, if anybody has any questions?
I got some.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Okay. So, the board and the building commissioner have received, as you heard earlier, numerous emails.
Yes.
And without going line by line, I want to address a few of the, you know, topics.
Sure.
One of those is the height.
Yes.
Of the new racks that are being. In brief, you're taking down existing racks out on the bulkhead and putting brand-new ones up, but they're going to be a little bit taller.
Exactly.
Okay. What's the height of those racks?
40 feet.
40 feet. And zoning for that district is 45?
Correct.
Okay. On those 40-foot racks, how many boats, how many levels of boats will there be? Are there three levels or four levels of boats?
It can vary. We can do up to four.
Up to four.
But we, we could modify it to put only two or three, depending on the heights of the boats.
Okay, okay. So you're putting in a 40-foot rack, and you could put one boat that requires 40 feet in height, and have nothing above it, at the lower level.
Yeah, that's.
Wouldn't make sense to use the rack that way.
Yeah, that's a little extreme. It's more like, you know.
You could put one on the lower level, and a, a 20-foot boat on the lower level, and a 20-foot boat on the second level, and be full. Or you could put four 10-foot boats.
Yeah, different sizes.
At four levels.
Yes.
You can use it all four different ways. So you could put them up to four level, up to four boats high.
Depending on the heights of the boat.
Depending on the height of the boat. And the, and the, and the top of the rack will be 40 feet. So if you put a boat directly on the very, very top of the rack, a smaller boat, I would assume, it could be more than five more feet tall, but.
If the boat was greater than five.
Yeah, I, I've looked into this earlier today, and that would, that would be acceptable, even though I know the neighbors don't believe that. If the rack is 40 feet, and that's, you know, that's what we're permitting or not permitting. And, and my example that I discussed with somebody earlier was, if I'm building a house, and the bylaw says I can go 35 feet tall, the ridge of my house can be 35 feet tall, but the chimney can be 37, so that it can go two feet above the bridge. It's not part of the formula. If I wanted to put an antenna on that chimney, and go up another 20 feet, and be, you know, saying hi, good buddy, on CB radios or ham radio or something, it's still okay. And, and your boat falls, in the commercial world, in that same realm, if you will. If we go over to the commercial world, and it says I can build a 45-foot tall building, and I put a flat roof at 44 feet, 11 inches, it conforms. I can now take a crane and put a RTU, rooftop unit, on top of that roof, or an elevator shaft, and it's still conforming. I'm saying this so that you understand how I interpret it, but I want the room to hear it as well. So, because I don't want the neighborhood to come up and tell me they can't do this, and they can't do that. I watch enough YouTube videos of people coming out of buildings, telling others what they can and can't do. And it's best not to tell, make, you know, false statements, or, you know, not be sure of what you're talking about. So that's, that's my question on the height.
Can I, can I just ask a quick question?
Sure.
Is there any way that we put conditions in to limit, make sure that they fall inside of the area, or is there, is that a?
I believe we can condition them any way we want. We can make them stand on one leg and bark at the moon if we want.
Well, then, I, I would feel that maybe we ought to just entertain limiting, putting a 40-foot boat on the, on the third rack to make it 70 feet. So let's somehow come up with some kind of a happy medium to keep it inside the 45 feet as close as possible. That way there, we kind of keep the temperature down in the future.
Are you hearing the board number? Do you think we can?
I mean, I'm trying not to limit you, but, I mean, would it be a gentleman thing to do, to?
Consider it. I think the other thing that I'd consider is vacating that rack, that top rack, during the winter months, when the neighbors are more likely to have a better view. So in other words, we would never store any boats on that top rack during the winter months.
And I do believe, in the last meeting, somebody said that there would be no buildings on, no boats on the top rack.
That was my fault. I misunderstood.
But it was said, and it was.
That was my misstatement, and I.
That's why we're trying to correct it all right now.
Yep, I apologize for that, and I was, I was going to say that at the outset, but we kind of got into the conversation. I was, there were some designs, that we had a metal pipe, metal beam underneath the top boats, but then I learned after the meeting that that was abandoned. So we can't do that, because the pipe would be over the 45 feet, and it wouldn't allow us to put any boats up there. So that was my misstatement, and I apologize to the board if there was some confusion in that regard.
There was, because I was assuming that there was not going to be anything.
Yes, and I, I did too, and I apologize for that. But the, the applicant is willing to remove those boats in the off-season and store them elsewhere on the site, so that they will not be either unsightly or a hazard, some sort of.
I think it was more of a hazard.
Yeah, safety hazard.
What was brought up from the neighbors, that it was.
And we're willing to do that.
So if I'm hearing correctly.
We would agree to a condition.
In the season where boats are going in, you, I'm assuming these racks are so you can take a monster forklift, pick a boat up like it's a toy, drive over to the water and plop it in.
Yes.
So it'll only be the winter months that would be the issue, right?
In the season, you want to take that 31-foot Bertram with twin hammies, and put it up on the top rack, and?
No. Too big. Not that big.
Okay. Okay, you want to put that 20-foot, 20-foot center console?
I would like to put a 20-footer up there, a 22-footer, yep.
Okay, but.
But that's in lane.
When the season, that's, that's when you have to, because everybody wants their boat close to the bulkhead, and you want to make.
That's when we do the launching and hauling of those boats.
Okay, so come wintertime, where does that boat that would be on the top of the rack get stuck?
We could put it in the backyard.
Okay.
Okay, well, possibly on a lower rack. Some of those boats go south, so we typically would have vacancy.
I think there's people on Green Street that would like to have it in their backyard. Maybe not.
Some of those boats.
Maybe it's, maybe it's Murphy Street.
Some of the customers also, they take their boats home, they don't want to pay for winter storage.
Okay.
So that top rack is generally more inclined, because they're trailer boats, you know what I mean? So it's not a big deal for the applicant to move those if, if there's a safety issue. We can put those elsewhere. The other boats will be stored in the rack. But during the valet season, we got to have access to them to get them in and out of the water for the customers.
We have other facilities we could move those top racks to.
You got other?
Away from onset.
That, with all my jokes, there's always some, some serious underlying tone, and that is, you know, I know darn well that if the ability to put something is there, is there, that neighbors are going to feel like, no matter what comes out of your mouth, they could be up there. So, just so you know, from this conversation, when, when we make a decision, if it's favorable, it's going to include language that is going to have specific dates by which boats can't go on the top of the rack.
Understand, sure.
Okay.
But I would just like to, you know, have some input on.
No, we want you to have input, you know?
Yeah, yeah.
If you want to, you know, start putting boats up there on December 30th, and be able to start putting them up there again on January 15th, let us know.
No, I would tend to think that we would be able to work with, you know, December 1st, to have the boats vacated off that top rack, and then we would like to be able to put boats back on there, starting April 1st.
Richard, what's your reaction to the?
So.
December, this December, December 1st?
December 1st.
How about November 31st?
That's fine.
I'm just wondering, you know, I'm just, I know, I mean, things happen, and Thanksgiving's a busy time of the year and everything, and you guys are all going to want time off.
Just my concerns, I know that these gentlemen are here presenting forward, but who's in charge of putting the boats on? Is there any, is there any signage that can be displayed on the rack for somebody that doesn't know that he shouldn't put it up there, just saying, you know, I know how it goes, somebody doesn't, can say, oh, I wasn't notified, or I didn't know?
Yeah.
So is there any way that there could be some instructions on there, not to be putting big boat, not to do this, and others?
We could put a sign up, but honestly.
I mean, I'm not trying to make it different, I'm just trying to look at the one time that the wrong guy puts the wrong thing up by accident, and it creates a problem, that's all.
There are a limited amount of operators on the facility, where they're year-round. They would know not to put the boats on that top rack. The staff would know, the management, we, we could also put up a sign if you.
And I, and I don't believe that it's, stacking-wise, you wouldn't be putting heavy boats on the top.
No.
And light boats on the bottom. Definitely wouldn't be putting big boats on the top anyway. I mean, I just, I can't see it.
Okay. So, something like Thanksgiving to April Fool's Day, or something like that?
Yep, that'll work.
Maybe.
Signage is fine, it'll be noted in the operations manual.
We'll just, we're just trying to.
Yeah, and then, and then our manager's here too. Our yard manager's here, so he will be aware, of course.
I'm just trying to make sure that, I mean, we all know how it goes, there's always.
Yeah, it gets lost in the shuffle.
Somehow, and then, maybe a year from now, it gets forgotten because of the heat is down, and something happens again. So that's all, I'm just trying to make sure that we keep this in mind of what's going on.
Sure.
Okay, so we're talking about racks, and I don't know if what I read is accurate or inaccurate, but I've read the words temporary racks in multiple emails, okay? So are there, are there existing racks that were put up just for temporary use while you're under construction, or are there, what's the, what's the scoop?
We do have temporary racks on the, on the property. We have used them during construction, but we have used them also during winter months for storage, and during the summer.
So they're temporary, but you used them in the wintertime, so.
They're not at that height.
So, I, I get it, but I think what I'm hearing through email, and I think what the neighborhood concern is, is that there were some temporary racks, whether they were permitted or unpermitted, or whether permits were even required or not. The word temporary, the tone in the neighborhood is, they were only there for a given period of time, and at some time, they were going to go away. Now I'm listening to you, and I heard the word winter storage, so that indicates to me that those temporary racks are not ever going away. What's the scoop?
They're not, they're not staying in one location, they move to multiple locations during the course of the year.
On the, on the site?
On the property.
So they're.
Movable, not temporary.
So, they're, so they're portable.
We move them closer to the waterfront. We move them closer to the waterfront during the season. In the off-season, we move them towards the backyard. Operationally dependent, you know, as the operation evolves, they, they move these racks around the yard, but they're temporary.
It's a warehouse for boats.
Temporary in the sense of where they're located, but not temporary in the sense that, you know, we're gonna throw them away. They're, they're temporary in where they're located and they're movable, so.
So, the language should be changed in our conversation to.
Temporary from, from.
Not no temporary to portable.
Temporary to portable.
And then that way there, we're not.
But the problem, still, I wanna, I wanna try to, you know, address as many neighborhood concerns before I open up the floor to the neighborhood so that we get less feedback. Hopefully, we can address some of their concerns. These portable racks, they still have to conform to setbacks?
I don't believe so. That's Paul's decision.
Well, here's, here's my concern and I'm looking at, over at Paul too, you know, if we're gonna hold your feet to the fire on where racks can be and how far they can be from the property line, then if we label a rack portable and you can wheel it on over to the property line and stack a bunch of boats on it, it's kinda like, you know, like a little boy peeing into the wind, you know? It's not working. So.
I don't, I'd have to look at the bylaw and definition of structure and whether or not that calls out it being fixed or not. If it being fixed, then it would be subject to.
Yeah, I think we need.
Setback. If it's not required to be fixed in a structure, then, then it's just movable. It's like putting a boat here, a boat there. You can move them around the yard.
I think this board's gonna need some guidance on where portable racks may be used.
Sure.
On, on a diagram. We won't, we won't. That being said, we probably won't be able to take a vote this evening, but I'd like to, unless you have something that you can draw up real quick by hand and make us happy.
Yeah, let me look at the, let me look at the plan.
We'll get there, you know.
Give me, give me if I may.
You're ahead, Nas.
Let's go back to the 45-feet height. There's no reason to restrict, go on a boat, taking it off in the winter, put it back in the summer. If it's 45 feet, it's 45 feet. So, in other words, they have to put a boat that's only five feet up there. End of story. So, if they put a boat 10 feet, you're at 50. So, in the winter, why not use it if they conform with the five feet, with the 45? So, we say 45 includes the boat, period. So, they have to pick short boats to put them up there. End of story. And they could put them in the winter, summer, season, off-season, whatever they want. On, on temporary racks, I disagree with all the temporary racks because they could be all over the yard. I mean, you're, okay, you put it here two weeks, you move it here. So, what, so that they, they mobile now, you could do it. So, I disagree with the temporary racks.
So, what I would.
A rack is a rack. It's gonna stay in the yard. So, whether you put it here or here, it's gonna be year-round on the, on the, on the lot.
So, let me answer, let me respond to you on two things, Nas, just so that we're all on the same page. We had already talked about the 40 and the 45 feet and what can happen above the 40 feet. I think that the applicant volunteered, we didn't request it, he volunteered not to use the top rack in the off-season, in the winter, if you will, from the end of November till the beginning of April, kind of, kind of as a courtesy to the neighbors to, to put some, a little, maybe not an olive branch, but at least a pit of an olive out there for the neighbors.
Right, but in the season, he might put a boat that's 15 feet high.
He might, he might.
Yeah, right. So, it defeats the purpose.
That would be.
And those neighbors are there in the season. So.
Okay.
I mean, what's, most of them, they're not there in the winter. So, I would say 45, 45, winter, summer, season, or no season, including the boats, 45 feet, period.
So, and that could be, when we, when we go to make a motion, that could be a condition that could be set. Would that be a condition that you'd want to suggest when we?
Absolutely, absolutely. 45, I mean, and I don't think it should be over 45. It should go without saying. The bylaw says 45 feet, 45 feet including the boat. But we'll, we'll put, we'll, we'll use it as a condition, but it should, it should go without saying. They put a boat six feet high on top of the rack, that's 46, that's a violation.
If I may address that issue.
Yeah, yeah. Nas, the attorney for the.
Yeah, go ahead.
Wants to respond to that.
You know, just, I just wanna briefly respond that, you know, the bylaw regulates the structure, the definition of the structure does not include an item like a boat on top of it. So, your jurisdiction is, your authority is over the structure itself. Putting a boat on top of it is not really, not necessarily within your jurisdiction. So, the approval of the structure at 40 feet complies with the bylaw. Your obligation is to apply the bylaw by special permit. We've always had boats on top of the structures in perpetuity. It was not, if, call it non-conforming if you want, but it was, you know, on the 33-foot structure, it was, there were boats on top of it that probably exceeded 45 feet. You know, some of the boats have T-tops and antennas and stuff like that. So, our position is is that the boat, and I believe that Paul agrees, that the boat is not part of the structure, so it can go on top. And, and, and I don't, you know, I understand.
I do. Nas.
Position, but I, I just feel like that's, it's not the structure.
And Nas, you don't have the benefit of being able to look out and into the room that I have, so I'm gonna tell you that. I looked over at the building commissioner.
Well, at one point, I'd like to hear the commissioner, if possible.
You wanna hear it out of his mouth? I'll bring him up.
If he's here armed, the commissioner's there.
He's here. He's nodding, he's nodding at different things that, like I said, I have the benefit of seeing and you don't. So, let's, let's hear from the commissioner.
Paul Turner, building commissioner.
Thank you.
I'm to the belief that the 45-foot height is to the top of the structure. You could put a structure up 45 feet tall and not put something on top of it. You could build a building to 45 feet of height and then you can put the rooftops on top. You can put the elevator shaft. Same argument that Jim said with the peak of the roof and the chimney.
So, the commissioner's saying you can go to the maximum height and then still.
And use it.
And still put something on top of it. They're going five feet below and seasonally putting smaller, the word small and boats doesn't kinda like go together, but smaller or smallish boats up on the top. But in the wintertime, they're gonna put nothing up there. I think that's both from a safety point of view and to give the neighbors a clearer view. You know, they, in the wintertime, they're all shrink-wrapped and they become really sight-barking. In the summertime, they're on and off, they're on and off. If, if the guy's got lots of gas money, they're in the water more than they're on the rack. But that, if that, does that answer your question, Nas? You wanna ask something?
Yeah, I'm comfortable with the commissioner's answer on that.
Okay.
Let's hear the, on the remove, on the temporary racks from the commissioner. I'm comfortable with that one.
Okay.
I've got an idea with that, maybe, before we hear from Paul. I've got an idea, suggestion. The temporary racks aren't before us tonight. I wasn't prepared to really address the temporary racks, but, you know, understanding that things come up during hearings. I don't even have a drawing that I can show you where we would put them. Why don't, I would think that if we could move forward tonight with the what is before you and then agree, a gentleman's agreement, that if Paul determines that the racks are not, have to comply with zoning setbacks, then he will send us a letter or he could send us an enforcement order that the racks have to be outside the 50 feet, et cetera. Or, the racks aren't even allowed at all, then we will tell, we will talk to Paul and we'll work through it. If there's something that Paul doesn't feel comfortable or disagrees, I will agree to bring this back to the board for the temporary racks. But it's really important for us to get through this hearing for the permanent racks because we have steel that's.
I get it.
You know, I'm sorry, I understand.
I know, these contractors, they want $4 and $5 an hour and then they want $3 on overtime and all this stuff, you know?
Totally willing to abide by Paul's decision and if there's an issue with Paul, like if Paul and I can't agree or we don't come to agreement, we'll bring it back to the board, like, help us figure this out. That's what we're here to do.
I also think that the mobile racks on actually racks, they're a tool. They are a boatyard. You need to put your boat somewhere when they're out of the water. It's like having a trailer. So, you want a bunch of trailers to move around or racks? Those are a tool. That's a part of doing business in a boatyard, isn't it? To have these racks, mobile racks to move them around?
Rack means multiple layers. A cribbing would be one layer. Am I saying it right? I'm not a boat guy.
Yeah, that's, that's accurate. A crib would.
A crib would be for one boat on the ground, but a rack, you could stack them.
So, is that what we're talking about or was, what's the size of them?
They are stacked.
Yeah. They're stackable?
Yes.
And how, how many boats?
Three.
Three high?
Again, we can adjust it to be too high.
Two.
And there's.
Let me, let me. So, there's a big discussion that we need to have about that.
Yeah, we need to, we can, we can kinda.
More, more discussion.
Yeah, we're happy to address.
I'm not brushing it under the carpet, but we, but let's talk about it a little bit more before we move on.
Sure.
How many boats can you currently handle with your portable racks?
It depends, again, on.
Again.
There, there are two portable racks. Right now, they're configured to handle two boats on the bottom rack. And John, what would you say, three middle rack?
Total, the total is about 20 boats.
On the portable.
20 boats, if they were all small. If they were bigger, it'd be less.
Correct.
So, about 20 boats worth of storage. If you glossed the racks altogether, you'd only have the bottom layer.
Spread them around the yard.
You should be losing about 15 spaces, am I guessing?
Our configuration change.
Half, okay.
Changes, you know, with whatever our clientele has for boats.
I think we don't, at this point, it doesn't seem like the board wants to prohibit you from having them, but the board wants to control where you have them and how, you know. Again, my conversation, you know, I'm thinking of the racks like a, like a pipe staging on wheels, you know?
Yeah.
You know, and, and pipe staging on wheels can, you know, I can remember being, working on a warehouse and we strapped a three-inch PVC on it and put Coke cans in it and M80s, we were shooting the plumbers, you know? So.
Yeah.
Those racks could, you know, they could become a toy for the guy on the big, huge monster forklift.
It's just important, what Steve said, if we need to address something with those portable racks, if we could please do that.
Yeah, yeah.
Separate.
We need to.
We've already been behind.
Okay, we need to know where the racks are gonna be and how, and we've already got a number out of here. We want it, we want some kind of a definitive, not to exceed 20 boats or 15 or 18 or whatever the number you guys, you need to come back at us with that and it's gonna be a caveat of when we set our conditions. I'll, I'll stop talking. Anybody else on the board regarding racks?
Yeah, well, with the temporary racks and then the request for an increase, what's the total number of boats that are gonna be able to be stored there? I know there was some concern about congestion and that it adds more movement and congestion, basically. So, I guess potential congestion.
Well, the concept is, is this is just a reorganization of the existing customers on the ground that we have to store on the ground and valet them into the water. So, we're not anticipating new, you know, adding boats to the racks, new customers. It's to reconfigure the customers that we have. So, that's what I've been told, correct, Greg? Yeah.
Okay.
It depends, again, on the size of the boats. If, if we have a, a big inquiry for larger boats, there'll be less boats, but if there's not that desire for the larger boats, we may target a smaller market.
So, I guess then the question would be, does the bylaw have a limit on the number of boats that could go there? Is, what, what's the current situation with the boats that are there?
I don't think there's any boat counter or anything in our bylaws about counting boats.
So, I think, but I think it's so, that being the case.
Do that job.
That being the case.
You don't want that job?
Need that one. That's funny.
That being the case, I think that it's important that the board consider the activity that's at that boatyard and how many boats can be stored there and are permitted to be stored there because this is what we're talking about right now with increasing the amount of racks. Because I hear that you're saying you're gonna move the boats that are on the ground, but what's to prevent you from putting more boats on the ground to take the place of the boats that you gen, put on the racks?
We won't have the room anymore.
But I thought you were going up in height, right, with the rack?
Yeah, but we won't have the room. The rack, the, for, the east rack has moved over further. It doesn't allow us any room in front of the shops right now.
Okay, all right.
So, part of the problem is if you, if you fill the yard in the summertime with boats, then the people that are gonna drive the boats have no place to put their cars. So, the boats go out of the yard and into the water and then the cars come, use the parking lot. In the wintertime, am I about right? In the wintertime, they don't do saltwater ice fishing. It's not popular around here. So, they take the boats out, they put shrink wrap over them.
Right.
And they jam the yard as full as they can because they charge them by the inch.
So, I hear what you're saying and that's exactly what I'm getting at. So, in the summertime, I think it's important to keep in mind that you are gonna have a lot more traffic and if there are more boats on the ground and less parking, then the neighborhood is gonna be spilled over with, just, just things to consider if there are more boats.
We open up our sheds for parking. We have a parking attendant. We have a gate. There's parking passes. We can limit the number of people. I believe any overflow is not from the marina customers.
So, you feel as though you can handle all, anything that's affiliated with the boats on your property?
Yes.
Any vehicle traffic coming to the property is gonna be on your property?
Yes.
Okay, that, that's your.
Yes.
That your earnest can, okay.
So, then, so that, that being said, that's, that's good to hear. I think it's important to keep in mind that these racks are not at 50 feet from the property line. They are 16 feet or going to be. Right now, they're at 6. So, 16 is not conforming. 50 is what's required. So, I feel like this board needs to keep in mind that an increase in height is absolutely an increase in the non-conformity or it's creating a new non-conformity. I think the rack, what's the current rack height right now, 30?
33.
33. So, if you were to move those back to the 16 feet and keep them at 33, this is a, this is a, that's not creating any kind of detriment or anything. So, special permit, definitely. You're creating a new non-conformity by going up. The requirement's 50 feet back. I think those neighbors, I would like to hear what they have to say because they're the ones who are then gonna have this increased height. We know what there's been, even the board, we've talked about the, the height and that it almost seems like, like we have to give them what the bylaw says at 45. We do not. That's if it's a by right, we would, 45 feet you could go to. But there is concern here that that height is gonna cause an issue, the 40 feet with boats being put on top. So, I think we need to keep that in mind. We don't have to say yes because if they were conforming, 45 or 40 feet is the limit. That's not the situation here. It's not conforming. So, I think we need to keep that in mind. I, I think that boats are gonna be put on that top rack and that it's going to exceed the 45 feet. So, I think we need to keep that in mind when we make our decision. And that's it. Yes, thank you. For the moment.
Okay. Sure.
Just so you're aware, I mean, there is a section that is outside of your, outside that 50 foot that is going to go 40 foot.
Okay.
So.
And that has nothing to do with us because it's conforming.
At that point, we do not have to vacate those.
Right.
Top rack during the.
Correct.
We can put up whatever height we want on top.
Absolutely.
Oh, just so everyone's aware, we are in our rights to do that.
Right.
So, we are, we are not an as-of-right application, right? We wouldn't be before.
If you were by right, you wouldn't be here.
Wouldn't be here, right? So, we'd be at 45 feet and we wouldn't be here. But as we all know, the board's obligation is to apply the bylaw, not just the 45 feet. It's to apply the bylaw. My May 3rd memo analyzes the bylaw. It says this is how the board should apply the bylaw. So, that's all I can say, that your, your obligation, you're kinda judicial, you're quasi-judicial entity. You're like judges to us. But your obligation is to apply your bylaw to our factual situation. Your bylaw allows this structure to be increased in height to 45 feet. It's allowed. It's very clear in the bylaw that you are allowed to do that. Moving the structure further away from an offending, non-conforming residential district is not, is allowed under the bylaw. In fact, it's encouraged under the bylaw because you're lessening a non-conformity. So, you're, just reiterating that, what you all already know is that your quasi-judicial personnel here to apply the bylaw to our factual situation and this bylaw allows the relief that we're requesting.
Thank you.
The height wouldn't even be, I wouldn't even ask for the height. We weren't really prepared to talk about it because it's allowed under your bylaw, but we are now and we're explaining our position. The only thing we're asking you to do is to confirm that the six feet to 16 feet is not substantially more detrimental. You don't even need to get to that argument under the powers test because you could make a determination or a finding that it doesn't intensify the non-conformity. So, you don't even need to get to the neighborhood discussion. If you get to that, I made that argument in my earlier letter, if you make that determination, you just need a finding and not even a special permit. But nonetheless, under your bylaw, you can still analyze it as not substantially more detrimental because there's no other way to come down on it. You're moving it further away, so.
No, I, I, I agree with your contentions, but I want to let you know that even if we didn't, even if we weren't required to go to the neighborhood, we, we'd like to hear from them.
Oh, of course. I wasn't suggesting that.
No, I know that, I know that. I just, I know, I just, in case somebody misheard you.
I appreciate that.
Okay.
Correction, clarification.
And attorney guard, this is, you're John Boone, right?
No, no. Greg Leaven.
I'm sorry, Greg. Thank you.
John's back here.
Okay.
He's with me too.
Greg. So, John's the general manager and you're the.
Regional vice president. But I also, I ran onset for 35 years. Right.
For 35 years?
Yeah.
Just missed ya. I, I ran the throttles on the first round the boat, around the Cape race.
Oh.
On the, on the 31-foot Bertram with the twin hammies.
With Dino?
Pardon me?
Dino Nightingale?
I know Dino. I know, yeah, he, in the Alligators and all the stories. But anyway, so attorney guard threw you to your regional manager or your manager.
Sure.
Did I hear you suggesting that if we were a little bit, worked with you a little bit on the wintertime 40-foot height, you'd limit yourself on the racks internal, that you could go 45 feet and stack on top of, is that what I kinda heard you kinda saying earlier while, while Veronica was, you said, let it be known that we're putting 40 feet. There's places where we can put 40 feet by right and we're gonna put stuff on top of it.
Yes, right, right.
Okay, but I didn't, I didn't know if you were suggesting that you'd limit yourself to.
I am. I would limit. I'd limit.
You'd limit the whole yard?[1794.72] You'd limit the whole yard?
I would still clean out the entire top rack.
For the whole winter?
For those dates.
Even on the ones that, even on the ones that we don't even have jurisdiction of?
Yes.
I just want the room to hear that. I want Veronica to hear it too.
Yep.
Well, the whole board, not just you. And even the people on Zoom can listen. Okay. So that gets us, I think we've kind of twisted the racks around as much as we can. We need to come back and readdress the racks. Maybe we can make a motion tonight, but it's going to include something to address racks.
You mean the portable racks? You mean the portable racks? Yeah.
The portable?
Yeah, yeah, that's fine.
The, the permanent racks that you're putting up, I think, I think we're pretty, pretty clear on what's happening there.
Good.
At least I, I didn't put that much sugar in my coffee. So I'm also noticing some concerns here about, I'm sorry, the shrubs and trees that have been cut down. I guess they were some kind of a natural sound barrier. Is there any landscaping plan coming in front of us or is there any plan to do anything to put arborvitae along the property line or make any, make any neighbors that don't like to see boats happy with some 60-foot?
Yeah, I mean, if, if somebody had a problem with some areas that they would like some plantings, we would at least entertain that and talk to them about it for sure.
You're not making any promises.
But that is not, that's not, again.
It's not, I know, it's, I'm just talking.
It's not anywhere near where we're dealing now with the.
Oh, I know, we're, we're.
Yeah, anywhere on the property would be interesting.
You know, we're not cowering between the lines here. We kind of, you know, the, the needle went off the record a little bit, but.
Okay.
I wanted to ask because I know it's going to come up, so I want you to know that there's neighbors that feel as though, that some, some natural vegetation kind of made things a little louder.
Okay.
Because it's gone. And if, if you've got 16 feet between the back of the rack, I think the back of that rack is facing the street that's making the most noise. Maybe I'm wrong. But between, from the 16 feet to the property line, if you could go over the property line and put.
There were no trees or any?
Yeah, it's kind of diagonal to the house.
Nothing was?
Yeah. Maybe I'm, yeah, I'm trying to do it in my brain here, but if there's a place that you could put some arborvitae or something like that that gets really tall but stays there, because I know how precious space is, but it's not going to get so tall that they're going to say, gee, we should have been looking at boats instead of green trees over there.
Okay.
I don't want, I don't want spite arborvitae. I don't think the neighbors are asking you to put trees that are going to spite them and block their view. I hope they're not. But they were concerned about noise. If you're going to do anything about taking care of noise, there's also been some questions, thank you for making a note. There's also been some question about whether it's drainage issues. Are you doing anything to correct or adjust drainage?
No, the drainage is adequate in that area, that rack area. There are stormwater plans that we adhere to and everything is adequate for that, what we've done.
Okay. Okay. Comments were made about your fuel tanks and stuff. We have no jurisdiction over any of that. We don't decide who inspects and how often they inspect and I don't need to address them. If somebody's going to come up to the microphone later and ask me if your fuel tank has been inspected annually, I'm going to say I don't know.
Yeah, it has been.
And that's going to be the end of that conversation.
It has been. It meets our.
Bringing it up so you, yeah, I know, I know it has to happen every year. I know it's the fire, that's the fire, there's, there's guys with red trucks that take care of that. Not, you know, but grease separators and all that, that's all part of your, your, if you drain oil out of a boat, you have a way of handling it.
Yes.
I think I've given this a cursory read. Do you have any more that you want to add?
I do not.
I know we've wasted a lot of time and I know that the people in the neighborhood have a lot to say. Paul, you might want to surrender the mic. I'm going to, in a minute, anything else from the board? In a minute, I'm going to open this up.
Excuse me, in, in the letter, wasn't there something stating about whether there was some town property being fenced off?
There's a question about the road, what's that? Nanumet Street goes right down the middle of the property.
Yes.
And the question has been asked, has that been, has an engineer done anything to take that and does, does the Marina pay taxes on it now or is it still considered a public way?
Not, yeah, it's not a public way. It's a private way. It's a paper street that was not, you know, it's abandoned.
But has anybody done anything, I know it was abandoned, but has it been officially released by the town to the?
No. No, we're, we're in the process with Land Court trying to get the street either relocated or expunged at this time.
Yeah, okay, so you're in, it's in the.
But it's a private way. Yeah, the, the boatyard owns both sides of the street, so when you own both sides of the street, you own the fee and the road all the way across, subject to the rights of others, if any, to pass and repass over the street that may have rights. But the street doesn't go anywhere anymore. It just stops and it's on our property, so it's really nothing for them to do. They wouldn't have the, wouldn't be able to pass and repass. You know what I mean? It's not something you can go sit at. So, but it's no, it's nowhere near, by the way, where the racks are.
It sounds like you're making an attempt to rectify it anyway, right?
Yeah, we are because, you know, yeah, because it may.
If that's, that's the case, then it's all, to me, I just was trying to cover what was on the letter.
I don't, I don't know where in particular, but I know up on the South Shore in Situate, there's lots of paper streets like this. They run along people's property and cross people's property.
We, we have them.
Yeah.
We have plenty of them.
Yeah.
And I know there's a process that you can find and redraw it and I think the argument, I don't know if it's for your edification or for, to make me feel like I'm smart for telling you this, I don't know. I don't need it for my ego, but I think the argument could be made that the people on Maple Street and Maple Avenue could say that they, you know, would like to, you know, access via Nanumet Street, whether or not it's necessary or righteous. I'm just saying that, that, you know, we might, we might hear that argument.
Yeah, no, no question about it. Anybody that, any lot that was defined on the plan that that street was laid out on, and I forget the date, it's a lot of time ago, would potentially have rights in that way. They'll all get notice from the Land Court and then the Land Court judge will decide whether or not those rights are still necessary. You know, when you provide alternate access like Maple Street and Maple Ave to a street that's now abandoned, the courts generally rule that, you know, you don't, you can get to your house on a public way, you don't get to get to your house any way you want. It's just because now the fee is owned by someone else.
I get it.
But anyway, that's an argument for a different day, but that's, that's the status of that paper street.
I'm not looking at my notes here and finding it quickly.
Thank you.
But I remember reading one or two, at least one author of an email mentioned a gate that was highly lighted and whether or not, do you have some gate that would require a permit?
I don't know.
I, I don't know. I've never known of anybody that need a permit to put up a gate.
We do, we do have a parking gate that limits who goes into the back parking lot. It's operated by a fob.
Okay.
If that's.
Is that on Green Street?
Yeah, it's off of Green Street, yes.
So you come down Green Street and there's a?
Take a right into that.
You take, to get into your property, you'd go through a gate?
Yes.
And, and you've got, and?
Actually, it's, you, there's a piece of property of ours before you get into that gate.
Okay. So you come onto your own property, you hit a fob and isn't one of them sliding chain leak things or?
Actually lifts up.
It's a, okay. A railroad crossing gate?
Yes.
Okay. And that's on your property?
Yes, it is.
Okay. And Paul, can you, do they need a permit to put up a gate? I didn't think they did. Okay. So, I mean, you can put what you want on your property usually, but, okay. Just making sure, just making.
Lights are too bright, you know? I don't, is it lit?
Yeah, mhm, every night.
Ladies and gentlemen.
If it's too bright, we would consider, you know, trying to find a way to dim it down or find a different light that might work.
Maybe redirect them if?
Possibly.
No, I don't know. I, I didn't go check it out, but.
We could look into that.
Sometime, my, again, you know, the olive branch and all that stuff, the, you know, the funniest thing happened today. I was looking at Facebook and sometimes Facebook is a pain in the posterior and sometimes there's some words of wisdom in there. And I, and I saw a Ralph Waldo Emerson quote, and I thought it was appropriate for this meeting and it said, Ralph Waldo Emerson said, "Your actions speak so loudly, I cannot hear what you are saying." I think that applies to both sides of this argument. So I think it's a good time to open this up to the neighborhood. To the neighborhood, I'm going to ask you if you'd like to speak. Come up one at a time, sit at the mic, state your name, state your address. I don't need to hear 15 times the same thing. If you agree, if the first speaker says, "I think he should paint all his sheds pink", just come up and say, "I agree with Joe and I agree with the pink sheds" and be brief. I don't need to hear long-drawn-out arguments for pink sheds or anything else that you think is pertinent or relevant. It's open. Who wants to go first?
Hi, everybody. I'm Rebecca Hemsley, 12 Green Street, direct to butter to Safe Harbor. How's everyone, gentlemen? Thank you for hearing us and listening to our concerns about the improvements at the Marina. I did write a letter, which I'm going to read tonight because I spent a lot of time preparing for this. And I would like to speak to a few things that were just discussed this evening with you folks as far as restricting the height and the placement of boats on that top rack just during those three months. And it kind of implies that there's only a hazard or safety issue during three months of the year.
So Rebecca, we, we want you to address the board.
Okay, sorry.
And, and just.
Okay, so I'm just.
No, no, no problem. You're doing fine and you're doing fine. I'm not picking on you, believe me. We want you to address the board and we're not going to have a dialogue.
I understand. I'm just.
No, no, that's okay.
My turn.
No, no, it's your turn and you're going to, and you're going to have a monologue. What I'm trying to say is, and you're entitled to it.
Okay.
What I'm, what I'm saying is, I want the board to listen to you, but I, I don't want to go back and forth. It's not, this isn't, let's make a deal at this point. We want to hear from you.
Okay.
And then we'll play the let's make a deal amongst ourselves. I'm saying that for you, but everybody in the room.
So shall I start over?
Pardon me?
Shall I start over?
Yes, you can.
Okay. So I would like to address, if that's okay with the board, things that were already discussed here tonight in regards to the concession that Safe Harbor has just perhaps agreed upon to restrict the use of the top level above 45 feet during just three months or December 1st, whatever ends up being agreed upon, insinuates that there's only a safety issue and a hazard to the community and the residents and the pedestrians during those three months of the entire year, which is not, not the case. And I would then just like to read what I have prepared and.
Go for it.
Sent to everybody because it sounds like that would be.
So you did a good job.
More effective. As a direct to butter 12 Green Street and onset to Safe Harbor Marina onset bay or SHM onset bay LLC and a full-time actively involved resident of onset, Massachusetts for over 20 years, I would like to express my concerns regarding the improvements, renovations and construction that have been underway since, as I believe, October of 2022. I do realize that we are here to discuss just the racks, but I think it's pretty imperative that a lot of these issues are heard by the board moving forward. And so I will continue. It has been my understanding that Safe Harbor Marina, represented by their attorney Stephen Guard, Guard Law LLC, sought to repair and rebuild the seawall, bulkhead, on the lower portion of their property to improve the structure and environmental issues and runoffs. Totally in support of that. Well done. I only became aware of the request for new and permanent boat racks to be installed when I received notice from neighbors in the town at the April 26th meeting. I was out of state on a business trip. I emailed Jonathan at the zoning board my concerns based on the little knowledge that I was able to acquire during the short time since I became aware of their true intentions. No idea they were going to replace those racks. Evidently, there was also a town hearing in October of 22, which I was never notified. Curious whose response, well, I think we cleared that up a little bit during the beginning of the meeting with the green cards that I never received. This procedural and ethical oversight echoes the manner in which Safe Harbor Marina proceeded when they moved their gas tank above ground, again, in an environmental improvement, completely supported, and sought to relocate it parallel to Green Street at the edge of their property, where it posed significant safety concerns for the homes within feet of its location. Little was shared with the abutters until it was too late. Their argument was that it would cost too much to locate it elsewhere on the property. Bends in piping increased their budget significantly. After the appropriate boards listened to our concerns, Safe Harbor Marina worked with its neighbors to position the gas tank to the rear north side of the dilapidated sheds and agreed to surround the tank with fencing that exceeded the height of the tank. This was not an ideal solution to the issue, but we agreed to it as they conceded to our concerns and construction was once again already underway. Please note and can be seen in the photograph, the fence enclosure still does not exceed the previously agreed upon with the neighbors' height of the gas tanks to enclose it fully. And the new racks that we're here discussing this evening have already been erected on site over the weekend, which the photo also shows. It just happens to be in that same picture. You all may and can all argue that we don't have a leg to stand on when it comes to the visual impact of our neighborhood, but as marketing, as a marketer and professional who has been in the design field, both residential and commercial for over 20 years, I firmly believe that we need to hold true to some reasonable standards of aesthetics so as not to compromise the integrity of our Victorian village nor exceed the proportional reasons of the footprint of our neighborhood. The oversight of such changes seems to fall onto the residents' shoulders to advocate for such things. Safe Harbor Marina's track record and transparency has not been terrific. I, and likely other neighbors, were swooned by the plans that were shown for the relocation of the office and paint shed to the northwest corner of the property, parallel to Maple Street and perpendicular to Gray Street. When shown their plans in January of 2021, John Boone reached out to me in an email requesting my support and to encourage the neighbors to as well. I was impressed by their plan to remove the existing sheds that are dilapidated, nothing about new racks. Often in high winds, panels of metal fly off of these sheds uncontrollably, which poses a tremendous safety threat to pedestrians, cars and homes, all within feet of the structures. I was dazzled by the concept that they would open up access to the small beach area with a pool and improved amenities for their clients and members. I was sold on the idea that my property value would only increase as these improvements were made. were made. I became an ambassador in the neighborhood and community for their upgrades. There has been no correspondence from the Marina since, and when queried on the progress of these plans at the Thursday, May 18th meeting, they looked dumbfounded and expressed their desire to hopefully one day embark on the project, but indicated that they needed the revenue they will be bringing in by the 30-plus new boats they will accommodate on these new racks in discussion and the 12 new boat slips in order to fund this project. Displays, it displays a lack of foresight on Safe Harbor Marina's business plan, but representative of their claim in their 2021 sustainability report that they do not yet have a firm baseline for many of our environmental and social metrics. But does align with their materiality assessment to find out what mattered most to our business, our key stakeholders, and to identify our biggest impacts and opportunities. I have those both in here. During the May 18th meeting, they also noted that they would need the cooperation and support of the neighbors to embark on the lofty phase of restructuring the layout entirely of the Marina and its entirety. Seems to be a clear situation where their company morals are to proceed without, with improving their revenue and bottom line and ask for forgiveness later. Poor business practice, unneighborly, and should not be tolerated by this community. Not exactly demonstrated of their pillar one, culture of character, also found in their 2021 sustainability report, that states, "Our leaders understand that our future depends not on big things, but rather the small things, carried out in ordinary moments with excellence, service, and good character. Character does not change under pressure or due to circumstance. It is defined as the person you are when no one else is watching. What sets us apart, from seasthat to dockhand, character is valued above all else." Over the course of this winter, I have endured the incessant drilling that has been shaking my house, literally my bed every morning banging against the wall. I wish it could, that was from something else. The structural integrity of my home has been negatively impacted in ways that have likely taken 10 years off of its life. My floorboards sag now on either side of their supporting beams. My wainscoting's come away from its connections, all under the impression that this was needed work to be done to address the environmental improvements that they were undergoing by replacing the compromised seawall and bulkhead. All work that I tolerated and fully supported and never complained about because I believed it was the best thing for the community, environment, and waterways, and because frankly, I'm a pretty good neighbor. It only occurred to me when I received the information of the hearing in April that this was all in preparation for this new rack installation. There are major safety concerns and threats which were made extremely apparent during a storm in April of 2020. I witnessed three boats fly and slip off the racks, both on the south end of the property and at the temporary movable, or now we're calling them portable racks, on the east side of the sheds. Apparently, according to their 2021 sustainability report, their culture of safety extends to their teammates, their members, tenants, and third-party contractors, but they also note that they aim to set an example for others at, at and around our marinas. These are my primary main concerns and issues that I and many others here tonight respectfully asked the board to consider. One, we would like the board to produce and make accessible to ourselves the concerned parties' conditional and limited variance granted to the Marina in 1973 that they have been, I haven't heard it discussed this evening, but they brought it up at the hosted meeting that they hosted last week. It's extremely relevant to their case as they keep referring to these new racks as being grandfathered in and non-conforming. Would like to note that, in my opinion, regardless of the 1973 variance, the proposed new racks are permanent structures that exceed a reasonable height, both in regards to safety, visual integrity, and the reasonable maximum capacity of the footprint of the boatyard. Two, would like the board to require and perform an impact study of the cumulative effect of increasing the boat capacity by 30-plus rack, stored boats, and 12 newly-built dock slips, which are already done. In its effect on traffic congestion, pedestrian safety, neighborhood footprint, noise implications, ordinances, the capacity of their footprint, and the general aesthetic of our community, as well as the sustainability of our homes, roads, and safety. The Marina has acquired larger, heavier equipment in order to accommodate the larger boats that they are now storing, moving, and launching, that has already impacted the structure of the roadway. Ask that the zone of the property and surrounding homes be clearly identified as to which area specifically acquired lots, these newly-acquired lots that are, the Campbell Street is the Paper Street on my map, Campbell, that the Marina has purchased, which were previously residential lots. So I would like to, I'd like clarification that those purchased residential deeded lots on the Maple side of Campbell Street, when was the purchase made, who approved it, and what variances or permits are required to transfer these lots from residential use to commercial use? Have they been rezoned? Why have I not been notified of any of this? And include the definition of a marine district and its commercial uses in relation to abutting residential properties and zones. Three, explain why there was negligence in notifying the neighbors, abutters. I think we may have cleared that up, although I didn't see any resolution on it. I just heard that the green slip that I didn't get, to avoid further miscommunications. Four, would like the board to urge Safe Harbor Marina to discontinue the use and construction of the temporary portable movable racks that are situated. I would, during this, this discussion this evening, I would, I would pose that they should be limited in their height and, and also monitored in where they're placed on the property. I understand that they are needed to operate a boatyard with a seasonal, you know, fluctuation and differences in moving things. Five, report, request a report from the conservation committee of their findings of the removal and dumping of the dirt excavated from the area where they have poured new footings for the proposed new racks. Currently has been dumped at the northwest corner of the property, closest to Gray Street, where there's also another gate on Gray Street. I do not know if it's on their property or not on their property. It's a secondary gate to the one that you, you mentioned with the lights. Request documentation and clarification of a variance or permit. That was, you addressed that, the parking light. Would hope, number seven, would hope that the board considers the integrity of the business practices of Safe Harbor Marina and its representatives in relation to these matters. Their contribution financially to this town, village, and community, and its stakeholders, who they carefully consider in their sustainability report, their key stakeholders, should be weighed equally to the residents before you as Wareham stakeholders. With every tax bill, water bill, and sewage bill I pay, I increasingly become a shareholder in this community. This is my children's hometown and should be preserved thoughtfully in perpetuality to the best ability of all parties involved. Finally, until the above matters have been appropriately addressed and forced to cease of any further construction, building, erecting, progress, and the disputed installation of these new racks. It's of my opinion, having seen these proposed new permanent racks being constructed, knocked together really, not carefully engineered, as claimed by representatives of Safe Harbor, since Saturday, May 20th, in my front yard, that they can easily be re-engineered, reconstructed, if you will, to fit within the height and capacity of the pre-existing boat racks, and is not too far along the process for modification that would suit all parties, all year long, involved, who are equal stakeholders and should be considered as such. To Safe Harbor representatives here this evening, I encourage you to find your unwavering character that does not change under pressure and is defined by who you are when no one else is looking. Remind yourself of your company's commitment to its code of ethics and business conduct, your company's compass of core values endorsed by the CEO himself, Baxter Underwood, which includes practical information on a guidance in navigating difficult situations in our business context. Well-attained topics include due diligence and fair dealing. We all recognize that this is clearly a difficult situation to navigate. To the board and its members, I urge you to carefully consider our town's business partners. Their practices impact on the integrity of our community and to be mindful of their intentions and the ramifications of their business dealings for generations to come. To be aware of their end goal and its commitment, not to our community, but to its key stakeholders. To hold them accountable for their code of ethics and their claim that they foster a collaborative and caring culture that pursues integrity, humility, and taking care of each other. And lastly, I invite you all to visit our neighborhood and see for yourselves the evidence of the impact that this is having and why we are concerned and vocal and intent on preserving our little neighborhood. Many thanks for your attention and consideration.
Thank you for taking the time to prepare that. Who else would like to speak?
I live at 25 Prospekt Street, which abuts directly Safe Harbor Marina. I am also the treasurer of the Onset Bay Association. I should just mention that Rebecca was a past president of the Onset Bay Association, so people who are here have a, a specific interest in our community. I am concerned about the height of those racks. At 45, at 40 feet, I witnessed specifically the boat blowing off in that April 2020 storm. You cannot convince me that the winds will die down between now and when those racks go up. And I have not seen anything that would indicate that the manner in which they are going to be tethering those boats has changed from what it was before, because the boat that blew off was tethered, and it fell and it hit other boats. I also wrote to the board, a memo that I would also like to read if I could. Dear Mr. Buckland, Mr. Elkalasi, and the ZBA board members, I'm writing as a direct abutter to Safe Harbor Marina at 18 Green Street. My house is directly above the current office building. I've been, I was in attendance at the April board meeting and expressed my concerns about the height going up at four levels at that time, particularly in regards to the safety of the boats at the highest level being blown off in high winds, which I personally witnessed in 2020. I also wrote an email to you summarizing the concerns of others who were in attendance, including the fact that even the Safe Harbor Marina lawyer, Stephen Gard, incorrectly stated that SFAM would not intend, did not intend to place any boats on the top rack when completed, which subsequently has addressed. Safe Harbor Marina subsequently sent a notice to some abutters on May 9th, including myself, to invite us to a meeting on May 18th to discuss the placement of the boat racks on the western side. And I included a, a photo of the letter. Unfortunately, the meeting was less than helpful. Presenting were Attorney Stephen Gard, John Boone, and another official whose name I do not recall. They were resistant to questions other than those specifically identified in the letter and stated quite clearly that the issue of the boat rack heights had already been approved and were not really open for discussion. This is my main point of concern. When we received the original notice of the work that Safe Harbor Marina was planning, there was no mention of increasing the heights of the boat racks. It made sense that improvements should be made, and I and others felt there was no reason to challenge their intent at the time. A chief reason we were unconcerned is that the Safe Harbor Marina had demonstrated a significant interest in communicating their plans for another project that they had intended to build a couple of years earlier, which included the demolition of the current buildings and replacing them in the northwest corner of the property. They came to people's homes, they showed them the plans, and suggested the property values would likely increases of results. They also showed a willingness to be good neighbors when they were willing to adjust their plans regarding the new gas, gas tanks that were installed. When we brought this up at the May 18th meeting, it became apparent that the plans that they were so willing to share regarding the new Marina buildings were a long way off from happening, and that they stated that a number of significant issues had yet to be addressed. It seemed quite likely that the grand plans of Safe Harbor Marina would either not happen for a long, long time or not happen at all. So when Safe Harbor Marina was making plans to change the Marina in ways that would clearly benefit many, most of its abutters, they were incredibly proactive and more than open to any and all questions, emphasizing their role as good neighbors. However, when they had plans they should have known would be met with criticism, they buried it in an announcement, not clearly stating their intent to significantly change an important element of the existing structure, and thus sought and apparently received approval without pushback from the abutters, which would have happened had they been forthright in their communications. From this perspective, this is clearly a bait and switch on the part of Safe Harbor Marina. They knew what they were doing and they got away with it. And now that their neighbors are up in arms about the outcome, they are claiming they did all the legal actions required of them and need not be concerned with our, concerned, need not be concerned with our concerns moving forward. I would like to ask the zoning board of appeals to reconsider their approval for the fourth level of the boat racks, or at minimum, to not allow Safe Harbor Marina to place any boats on the top rack at any time. When those boats are added to the fourth level, which will occur continuously throughout the year, the cumulative height of those racks will clearly exceed the 45-foot restriction and will pose significant hate, uh, safety hazards. I will guarantee you that boats will be blowing off. I and others who are concerned will be attendance at this meeting. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you for your time and your well-prepared statements, sir. Who else would like to speak?
Could, do any of these boats have a chance to leave their property at all?
Yeah, I think he talked about that already. Some of the people...
No, I mean, in this blow-off situation, it sounds like the only damage was on your own property and to your own clients.
Yeah, correct.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Jim Morrissey, 26 Maple Street, and I'll be brief. I have a question for the, the board. On the initial installation of these racks, I have to believe there was a variance back in 1973? And if so, were there restrictions and limitations? And if there were, does that have any bearing on this new special permit?
I was going to try to keep it a monologue, but I'll try to answer you as best I can. They're fair questions. Everything you've asked is available to you through the Freedom of Information Act. You can go to the town hall and request information. The board's not in a position or prepared to delve into archives on a last-minute request. There's, there's no way I could, I, I don't have the 1973 decision, number one. Number two, to the best of my knowledge, there's a thing that they call statute of limitations. I think it lasts 10 years. So anything that happened in 1973 is probably not pertinent to this conversation at this point right now. What we're looking at is now, today, what they're doing now, and they're going to require, you know, anything that's there that's grandfathered, racks that are down on the bulkhead, they're there, you know? To give you an example, we had somebody come in front of us, and a bunch of neighbors were upset because a guy bought a property and there was a boathouse on it. And the neighbors just, you know, they were adamant, they were BS. That thing had been there for 30 years, and they were yelling and screaming. And so the attorney stood up and said, "Thank you, it's been there for 30 years by your testimony. After 10 years, it was there by right. You can't challenge it. Now sit down and be quiet." So there's your concerns, and this is what we have to deal with. Am I giving them, attorneys here, am I...
Yes.
I'm just trying to, I'm trying to be straight with both sides. Thank you.
You know, well, well, I understand, you know, the bylaws, and they're using that as the upper limit, that you can't exceed that. But certainly the board can do anything from that level and make any type of restrictions or limitations up to that level. Is that my understanding?
To, to a certain degree.
Okay. So I would just, in, in good faith, and with the input from, you know, my neighbors, that the board would consider that and, and would look into that very seriously. The other thing is, I also, there's been a, I, I, maybe misleading, but I know the, the topical conversation has been about upgrades. But I see this as more as an opportunity for Safe Harbors for expansion. And we see that as neighbors. This is an opportunity that they're using, even though they're telling the board, it's an upgrade, it's an expansion. You know, we sat idly by while they got the permit for the added slips, which added another 12 boats on the dock. Then we sat idly by when they bought all these deeded lots and incorporated that into the marine district. And then we sat idly by when, you know, they're making this proposal. And again, what we're seeing is that there's certainly more boats that are going to be, they're handling bigger boats, they're bringing in more heavier equipment to handle those boats, and we're gonna, we're seeing an influx of congestion of cars. I mean, I'd like to get a full count of the number of boats that they service, and do they have enough parking spaces to accommodate those boats that they're servicing. Now that they have the 33 extra boats on the rack, and I'm telling you, it's not because they're trying to better manage their inventory, it's, they'll, they told us in the previous meeting, they're adding this, these racks to bring in more revenue, to increase revenue. So, you know, my concern is that heavier equipment, heavier boats, we're seeing a deterioration of our roads, the sewer systems, the septic systems, the water and gas lines. I can tell you, in the Marina parking lot, there was a sinkhole last fall, in the summer. And because I have two catch basins on Maple Street that, an easement through my property to the drain that goes, drains out into the bay. The, the heavy forklift created a sinkhole in right where that drainage was. Now, we are no longer able to drain our water from the catch basins on Maple Street. When it rains, we have a foot of water. I've complained, and I've filed a complaint with the DPW on this, and they're investigating it. But the Marina, you want to talk about a good neighbor, they just refill that sinkhole with stone and did not notify the DPW that that now drainage for, for the bay has been compromised. And we're seeing a lot of silt and runoff, and I can tell you that now, where you're at high tide, at low tide, you can almost walk out like 30, 40 feet, and that never was the case before. So, you know, as neighbors, we're very, very concerned about the activity, the expansion, and some of the environmental effects on our neighborhood.
Thank you, sir. Who's next?
Quick question, as far as business hours, what do you...
What are your business hours? Has there been work being done beyond or earlier than normal business hours there?
We try to keep it from 7:30 to 7:00 at night unless there's emergencies.
Yep.
But that is seven days a week.
Yep.
During the winter, that's cut back quite a bit.
Thank you.
Go ahead, ma'am. Your turn.
Thank you. I'm Louise Sivetti. I'm representing Tammy Young at 30 Maple Street.
Okay.
And I did write the letter. I'm not going to read it, it's four pages long. It's not necessary. You've addressed a lot of the points that I've made on that. I do want to quote Mr. Gard stated, Chapter 48, Section 11, regarding the abutters to the abutters. So that chapter does state it's direct abutters and abutters to abutters within 300 feet of the property. 18 Green Street encompasses all of that area that I outlined and read. It's not just the section that they're working on, it's the entire property, and that's the proper land use, quote from Chapter 48, Section 11. So I would like for you to consider the fact that all of the abutters were not notified in regards to the notification regarding the zoning board and also the Conservation Commission back in October. So--
Well, Conservation Commission is--
Yes, I understand. I understand. I'm just making the point.
Yeah, I get you.
So if you would kindly look into that as well. He was talking about Section 1361, the pre-existing non-conforming, and he said that the use was grandfathered in. You just stated that anything that happened way back then doesn't matter anymore, so it's not grandfathered in anymore, apparently.
No, I didn't say it wasn't grandfathered in. I'm saying, once it's there, it's there.
Okay.
Okay.
So it's an existing--
And I'm not an attorney, ma'am, so I'm not, you know--
I'm not either.
Okay, okay. So I just don't want, you know, I don't think my word is gospel. I usually, I don't use a chisel and a stone and a hammer. I write in pencil, and I wear out my erasers.
So do I. I'm glad we have that in common. I would just like to say that there's--
I'm going to stop you for a minute--
Yep.
Because our assistant planner was kind of like giving me the, I don't know if that's hair on his eyeball or just, he's smiling at me--
I thought I was doing the monologue as well as the other--
No, I'm going to stop, because he was giving me, so something about the abutters list that you--
Yes, Chair, through you. I brought up Wareham's geographic information systems, and it clearly shows that it is not one whole property there. It's all different plots of land. So it is correct that 18 Green Street, where the work is getting done is from that, and I have it up.
I understand your argument, and understand your argument. And if, at some point, an aggrieved party, a party that's aggrieved by the decision that this board makes, if somebody is aggrieved, then they can challenge the decision, and a judge can look at it and make a decision that either overrules, but I don't know what's to be gained by saying, you know, I don't, it seems to me at this point, either by water bubbler, or by word of mouth, or by Giraffe Express or something, that anybody that's got one of them green dots on this map knows what's going on. So maybe they didn't get proper notice, proper, but I think, I think, and I certainly hope, and I'm going to let you go back with your monologue in a minute, I certainly hope that anybody that's got one of these green dots that thinks they're entitled to a letter that wants to talk has or will speak. Go ahead.
Thank you. I do realize that we can, after the decision is made, appeal the decision. I'd hope that we didn't or wouldn't have to go to that extreme. In regards to the height of the proposed racks, I did send in some photographs, and actually, in their proposal, there was a photograph taken from Gray Street heading down towards, this was the, this is the photograph that they submitted.
Okay, yep.
I just want you to note the top of the boats that are showing above the row, above the height of the building, the steel building, and then 30 Maple, which is over to the far right.
Mm-hmm.
That's a third row, and they're proposing a fourth row. So I just wanted to give you an idea of the height that they're speaking of in relationship to the residential neighborhood that they are directly within. So although they have the right in this zoning district to go up to 45 feet, we're asking, because aesthetically, it is substantially more detrimental to go up to that height, that they maintain the three racks that they have now. A fourth rack would be well above the third floor of any of these homes. And yes, you know, we can say that it's a safety issue, we can say that it blocks the view, but we're just asking that it not be higher than all of the houses that surround that area. It is a small village, this was a small Marina. Safe Harbor would not have purchased this property if they couldn't expand it, but they are expanding it. We're not opposed to them expanding it, but to the extent that it maintains the small village that it is. It's, they did purchase all of the lots from Campbell Street or Nanumet, however you want to state it. The zoning was changed, and they are able to store all of the boats there. We haven't seen any of the racks go all the way up to the rear of the property. We do see them up against the steel building, the temporary racks, and I know we're not discussing that, but where they moved their fuel tank, there's a temporary rack right beside it. And that, it's also in the photo that they took, that they submitted. I just want that to be a consideration. And again, aesthetically, it is substantially more detrimental. So I want you to consider that for a variance, because it is a variance when they're taking an existing non-conforming structure, and they're creating or building a new non-conforming structure. Whether it's less detrimental in regards to the distance, it's still a new variance. It's still a new structure. And the board, I mean, the zoning ordinance does define structure as this particular pilings with stacks on top of it. So it is a structure. We did want to ask what the time of day was and what the year-round use was going to be. Rebecca Hemsley did say an impact study, I would agree with that, so I'm seconding her And again, I do wish to see where their grease, oil, whatever their oil separators are installed. I don't see that they were. I would like to believe that that happened, that they do have that capability of absorbing oil and grease and gasoline or diesel that comes down as the property slopes, but I don't know that. Let me just look through my notes. Yeah, whether or not it's a public street or a private street, they said that they are in land court regarding the paper street. I don't, I don't know. Why are they in land court if they purchased the property or if it's considered their Again, there's another photo from what I submitted to you showing the view from Maple Avenue towards the three temporary racks, the third row of the temporary racks, and it's quite high. Again, it's visually substantially or aesthetically substantially more detrimental. And I believe that's all I have. Thank you so much for listening.
Thank you for, thank you for taking the time to prepare your thoughts as well as you did.
Thank you.
Thank you. Who else would like to speak?
My name's William Bogans, 17 Maple Street. I think the people that have preceded me have covered many of the issues. I'm going to sort of focus on one that I'm not sure why it exists, why the problem exists. And this is the Campbell Street, Nanumet Street question. You can call it a paper road, it's a road. It's on the, as Louise Demond said, email said, it's still on the town maps, it still shows that it's supposed to be getting plowed. We do know that there are sewer lines that went underneath it, perhaps water lines as well, that have been crushed, no longer using, as Jim said, and causing other issues. But what concerns me, I'm a risk manager, I work for very, very, very large global companies as a consultant, and what concerns me is the potential liability that our town and we as individuals have for accidents that may happen to people or property on a town-owned street.
Are you submitting to this board that you've done some--
No, I'm--
I'm trying not to--
I'm trying to let you talk--
I don't know-- But I got a question.
Yeah.
Have you determined that the town owns that street, and do you have evidence to that?
I do not know.
Okay, so you're just questioning--
I'm questioning--
If, in fact, it was owned by the town, then does the town have the liability? If, in fact, the town never took it because it was only drawn, and roads get drawn and then they get taken when they're accepted by the town, if it was never accepted by the town, then the liability remains with the lots on either side of the road, go to the middle of the road, and if it becomes dissolved, that's how it gets dissolved. If the town never took it, that's the way it is. If the town has taken it, then your question has a lot of merit and validity, but--
So again--
Again, I don't want to have a dialogue, I want to let you go back to your--
Right.
But I just wanted to--
Absolutely. I understand, and I think that's one of the questions we, or some of us have, is what is this street? We think it's a street. It's shown on town plans as a street to this day. Up until, I think, I don't know if it was last year or last summer, there was access off of Gray Street into there that was stopped when a gate was put up across there. A very substantial gate, which I'm not sure who put it up or whether there was approvals to put it up. I have no idea. All I know is that in the wintertime, there are boats, large boats, stored there on stands that, you know, some kid playing over there for whatever reason, some windstorm, whatever happens, some kid gets crushed or severely injured, we have a serious problem if the town still owns that street. Today, there's a gate there. Recently, some folks were moving in on Gray Street, and they were trying to bring a moving van in. And the moving van couldn't get into the lot because they couldn't back into what was that street. So I think eventually, somebody from the boatyard came up and opened the gate and allowed them to have access or to back in it, and they were able to get up. Today, I think as one of my predecessors here stated, there are, I don't know, 50, 100 yards of fill that's been dug up from somewhere as part of this project, just dumped there where this street used to be. There's no containment around it whatsoever, so any rainstorms we have, whatever's going on, you know, stuff is running off, as Jim said. So, but we've got some issues with the street, who owns it, who doesn't own it, how it's being used, and potential liability. And I'm very concerned, so just wanted to--
Thank you, thank you for your comments, sir. Who's next?
I'm just going to ask the attorney. You did address that, if you want, this side and this side.
Yeah, the chairman actually aptly described it as well--
That it all goes away.
The title report, yeah--
You addressed this already.
Unless it's a public way.
Right.
But it's been, it was a private street, and when you buy a lot on either side of a private street--
It's--
--you own it all the way through. So, and our title report shows it as a private street. I have no information that it's a public way.
No, but you did address it earlier.
Yes.
Yes, thank you.
Can I make one comment to that?
Yes, come on up and finish, because I don't want anybody, I don't want anybody going home with--
Okay. Sorry.
Restate your name, because you walked away from the mic.
Bill Bogans, again, 17 Maple.
Thank you.
So what I'd like to know with regard to that, if it was a private street--
I'm not going to give you that information, I do not have it. I just said that this gentleman--
No, no. I'm just--
Pose your statement, sir.
If it's a private street, why is it on the town snowplow list? That would indicate to me that it's a public--
I'll answer that question. I can show you lots of things that towns do that make people ask questions.
Mm-hmm.
And doesn't mean they're right.
Mm-hmm. And we had town sewage going in underneath it and town water lines going in underneath it. So whether it's public or private, you can say what you--
Yeah.
People can say what they want, but it needs to be--
Unfortunately, in this case, if you really want to know, you know, and I don't mean to, don't take this as flippant, if you really want to know, go find out.
Yeah.
I don't mean that in a flippant way.
I understand.
You tossed the ball, I caught it, and I threw it right back. It's your ball.
You know-- Again, I'm just--
Yeah, and I don't mean to be--
I'm just going to bring, I'm going to make one last statement to the board, as sort of as I started off. I see this as a potential significant, potential liability to the town, to bodily injury or property damage to people. I think it's the town's responsibility to figure out what is going on here.
You can go and get a meeting with the town manager and explain that to him.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Frank DeCholli. I'm at 1 Maple Ave. I'm the guy that's right on the water that has to look at all this, and a couple of things I do want to address is, A, there's been a lot of things that have happened, I'm 50 feet either way from them, I've never been notified. I was the guy that you guys stopped the meeting last time and to get notified. And now, I'm not too sure if I was supposed to get notified for this meeting, I never got notified again. Whatever the situation, they have a whole new thing of dogs out there, never got notified. 2015, I bought my dream house. It's not cheap to buy a house on the water, all right? They came in not too far after, it was a family-owned business. I grew up in Onset. I grew up being in Onset. Onset is a beautiful place, as you guys are well-known. Now we have a big corporation coming in, one of the largest marinas, if I'm correct, in the world, and they're going to make it into something that doesn't fit in Onset. How much further are they going to go up into the bay? How much more damage are they going to do to the land? Because it doesn't seem like, you call conservation, when they cut the trees into wetlands, nothing gets done. So I agree with everybody here. I don't need to keep going, but I will tell you this, I did look into that road. I went down to the assessors. I got all the printouts, that's where some of this stuff that Louise sent you. It is a town public road owned by the taxpayers of this town. I went to Ken, the road commissioner. He agreed with me. Now, why they're able to block a town road that's paid by taxpayers is beyond me.
I can, I'm going to interrupt you, and I'm going to give you a quick answer, because nobody's filed a complaint. This board doesn't file the complaint. You're the neighbor, you see the problem. You're the watchdog.
I have filed complaints--
File the complaint.
And the thing is, from what I was told, and I'm not going to say by whatever source, what I am going to say is nowadays, you can't-- what I am gonna say is nowadays, you can't just speak to it, you have to email it. I'm in construction. I don't email. I'm sorry. I'm a hammer guy, old school, whatever. So that's why I want to say that. Want to talk about temporary racks? I'm gonna tell you, when you buy these racks, there's no racks, and Paul, you can probably, because I have to deal with this doing construction, if Paul doesn't have something in the books, by the codes, they go buy the manufacturing specs, they throw it back to the manufacturer. There's not one manufacturer that'll call these boat racks portable, temporary, anything. They're gonna say these racks need to have a certain size footing, to have a certain amount of weight. They're gonna say these boats need to be tied down a certain way, why, to cover themselves legally. So to sit here and say we have temporary racks, portable racks, it's not anything out there. Get the manufacturing specs to come out and say that, and then we have something new. The problem is, towns don't have bylaws for boat racks. So they're using it as a structure, a wide range. And I've actually gone to the state and talked to them about boat racks, because we do have a state rep that, as you well know, and I have talked to him. And the problem is, it's not defined. But he was the one that said, go back to the manufacturing specs. And that's all I'm gonna ask on these boats, and if they have to be footed, now they're permanent structures, and they need to be permitted. For the last four years.
Excuse me, sir. I kind of admonished the first lady that was up here, and I didn't, I did it with respect. And I don't want her to think that I don't like women and I like men. You've looked away from this board and talked with the applicant.
Well, you know, I'm sorry. I'm trying to, I guess, talk to the lawyer.
I like, I like to treat everybody the same.
No, I understand. I appreciate that. I'm sorry.
Thank you, thank you.
The other thing is, and just my last thing, I'm not too sure how you get to become a zoning board member, if it's something that you choose, it's elected, or what, but you guys decided to do this because you care about your town, correct? You're here to make sure your town is not going in the wrong direction. And all I'm gonna ask you guys is, again, I applaud you for doing this and coming out and doing this on your free time, because I doubt you get paid for this. If you do, it's not enough. Please, go down to, and look at that marina. Look at how this stuff is being mishandled. You guys are gonna sit here tonight and try to choose and vote on something that you'd have never seen. And all the neighbors are saying is, come down, look to see what 45 looks like, how it's over towering, and how it does not fit there. Look at the piles of dirt being misplaced, not being protected, so it doesn't go into the bay. Take a look at how many boats are actually there. Last year alone, I had to call the fire department four times because of diesel or gasoline leaks. And you know what happens? I paid money to shellfish, along with everyone else there. Onset Bay last year, probably, I'm just guessing, 80% of the season, you could not shellfish in Onset Bay. And it has to do with the increasing amount of boats. In front of my house, you cannot shellfish at all, except from, I believe, December 1st till April 1st. And trust me, when I first bought my house, I tried it. Way too friggin' cold. I'm just saying. I really wish you guys would take the time, before you make a decision, and go down there to see what's happening to this marina. This is our town, not their town. They don't care. They, they're here. It's a big corporation. This is our town. And I'm asking you guys, go down there and take a look. Look at the trees being cut. We bring you pitches, they don't mean anything. You really gotta look and see what the site looks like. That's all I have to say. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your time. Who else would like to speak?
Just a remark to that. I appreciate everybody coming out, and we do care about our town. But it's funny, the only crowds that come here is when they can see it outside their window. I would like to see all you people in here on every other thing, with every other meeting that we got going on, regardless of what it is. If it's concerning, and you want to say, oh, my children are gonna be here, my children are here. My children are grown up, and I'm concerned about the whole thing. And I am on this board only because I care. So don't come up here and think at one minute we don't, but when everybody wants to say, oh, you don't know this, it's always a problem with somebody when it's outside their window. But they don't care if it's a mile down the road, they don't care if it's two miles down the road. Everybody only comes here when it's only across the street. And if you really cared, you'd pay attention, and you'd be here at all the meetings. Thank you.
Okay. Come on up, ma'am.
It's a little intimidating.
It's all right. We don't, we like everybody.
Well, what's intimidating is sitting up here on the board trying to do something right when you think we're not paying attention.
Oh, no.
So, I mean, I mean, it goes both ways, ma'am. Don't be intimidated on me just because my voice is loud. I'm not intimidated. I'll sit here and listen to anybody.
He hasn't had his Snickers bar.
That's all right. No, no, no. I mean, I guess my impression was that we're.
It's all good. It's all good. We want to hear from you.
We appreciate, mine is just a very, you know, all the important topics have been discussed, but I'm Carolyn Morrissey, and I live on 26 Maple Street. So my concern, we have been the last two years, you know, full-time owners. I had been on Gray Street. I've grown up there since I was, in the summer, since I was seven years old. And actually, two of my friends, the Savianos, you know, lived on Campbell Street. I'm not, you know, that's not, you know, neither here or there right now, but it was, I had two friends that, you know, that, growing up there, but.
Very lucky if you have two friends.
Oh, I have, I have a lot more than two friends. And I am very blessed.
I'm sorry.
No, but I'm very blessed. But my concern has been the amount of traffic on Maple Street, and I feel like it's kind of a simple thing, maybe, that signage to the marina, or I think all of us who live in Onset or Wareham recognize that getting, giving people directions to get here is not easy, because it's either Onset, Buzzards Bay, or Wareham, and especially where there's a Maple Street in both Buzzards Bay and Bourne.
Yeah, especially when you get the Buzzards Bay zip code in Wareham.
Yes, and we have an Onset zip code, we have a Wareham zip code, and we have, our mailing address is Buzzards Bay. So when people will plug in.
Only confusing to everybody except the people that live here.
But what, no, what happens is, like, friends, if I give them, you know, the address, and this used to happen, you know, like, on Gray Street too, you just, the directions that they come down, there's so many cars that are coming down Maple Street, thinking that they're going to the marina. And then when they get to the end of the street, they realize, oh, the marina's over there, it's kind of like a dead, there's no outlet to, you know? So then they turn around, which is, you know, not an easy thing to do, to, you know, turn around, and then they fly up the street. And I happen to have a neighbor who has a little three-year-old, she's having another baby, there's so, it's just scary. It's scary to me. I'm a nurse, I'm a, you know, my kids are grown, but, you know, there's, there's pets. I mean, all the pets are within the yard, but you just, I just find that it's hard for people to find the marina, because it's a very.
I'm very, very familiar with what you're saying, ma'am.
Yes. So my concern as a resident is the amount of traffic, and it's, because there's only, there's not many houses on our street. So it's 99% of the people, especially in the summer, that are coming down, and it's not their fault, they're just genuinely trying to find the entrance to the marina, and, but it's causing a lot of stress and anxiety, and not being able to just kind of be outside in your front yard, or worrying about, you know, my little neighbor kind of just going outside, like, oh, daddy, whatever, and then, you know, people are not seeing. I've addressed, you know, the speed. So I think, from my perspective, that's, if they could improve the signage, you know, like, off of Onset Avenue, directing it, you know, to Green Street or however, so it's a more direct route, because the traffic on Maple Street has, it used to be just kind of a nice, quiet street. And it should be, because there's no outlet to it, you know? It just ends at the water, we're three houses up from the water, but it's, we sit on our porch, and it's, I call it the Indy 500. So I'm hoping that this summer, especially with the added volume being proposed, and also that, you know, we have a friend who's part of the Freedom Boat Club, who was, that now is, you know, associated with safe harbors, so there's transient people kind of coming in, you know, to rent their boats for the day or whatnot, that once again have to find a place to park and are not familiar with the area. And it's not, it's a very residential area to try to be making wrong turns and turning around and stuff like that. So, as I say, I'm concerned about the safety of, of some of my neighbors, especially. So, thank you for your time.
All good thoughts. Thank you very much for your thoughts. Who else would like to speak? I would like to make a comment. Unfortunately, fortunately, our bylaws might prevent them from putting up the signage that you might want. I don't mean, I don't know that for a fact, but, you know, I'm sure, from a business point of view, I'm sure the applicant would like as many people as they can possible, and I can tell you from a, you know, from a driver's point of view, I've done exactly what you said. I've, I've gone down Maple Street 80 miles an hour, stopped at the end, slid 15 feet, threw it in reverse, burnt rubber all the way into Maple Avenue.
That was you?
And then I was 110 miles an hour all the way back up to turn right and get over to the marina, because I needed to use one of them porta-potties, and I couldn't wait. But it is, the natural traffic pattern wants to take you right down Maple Street. I don't know, I'm gonna, I'm saying this for, for the applicant's edification, if there's some solution they can come up with, I applaud them. You're a nurse in hospitals, they draw lines on the floor, and when you're in the emergency room, you follow the green line to the x-ray, and the orange line to the blood lab, and the, I don't know if the town would let them draw a, get a street painter and put a yellow brick road from Onset Avenue right into the marina, but if they would, that would be a terrific solution if, if the town would allow it. But I don't even know if that's a possibility. Who else would like to speak? Come on up, sir.
Some of the stuff was already discussed. My name's Mike Olbrans. I live 54 Andrews Street.
Yeah, here you are, sir.
Mike, you gotta say it again, you're, sorry.
The recording. Yeah, Mike Olbrans, 54 Andrews Street.
Thank you.
Some of the stuff that I'm on, it's been repeated, but I just.
No, no, we gotta, we're gonna store.
I have a grandson who has cerebral palsy. He's been about three and a half years at Children's Hospital. He was at my, I take care of him during the day. He was at my house the other day, and the cars come down, they might miss the marina entrance, and almost get clipped two days ago, about 4:00 at night.
Well, we're glad you're here.
Yeah, within inches. He's got a little walker, he can't get out of the way. The marina can put up some more signs, which you just said you don't have the right to tell them, but I'm asking if you guys could put up some signs so that people can see.
Again, sir, you gotta talk to us.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
That's all right. You just ask the board, you know, and they, they can hear everything you're saying. They can hear everything you're saying. And the problem is, they could be willing to spend a million dollars on signs.
It's not gonna stop people from doing what they're gonna do.
And the police will come and rip them down, or the other, DPW, or somebody, and throw them in their yacht and say, stop littering our town with signs. Unfortunately, as many people that are concerned about people going the wrong way, there's 10 people that don't want signs. You know, that's.
Oh, I understand that, you know.
That's a reality.
Life is a double-sided coin.
Yeah, yeah.
Not easy.
Two-edged razor blade. Go ahead, keep talking, I'm sorry.
No, I just want to thank the board for everything you guys done. You guys do a great job. Yes, I don't show up for all the stuff, because I don't know what's going on. This is in my own backyard, and I'm heavily paying attention to it. Maybe I should pay attention to others' people's backyard, and, but I couldn't voice anything because I don't, wouldn't know what to say.
To that matter, just so you know, our chair is in Lebanon tonight, and he's, he's at the meeting. He's on Zoom. There's a thing called Zoom, and you can get a link, and you can sit home on your computer or on your smartphone, or if you've got a dumb phone, even some of them can watch it.
They can have one of those.
And you can watch the meeting, and you can be, see this, see the man in the picture? He's in Lebanon right now, but he's here.
I thought he went to bed.
It's 2:00, it's 2:30 in the morning.
I haven't gone to bed.
3:00 in the morning.
4:00 in the morning.
Thank you for all your time. I really want to thank you guys for everything you do. I hope you take our neighborhood into consideration. When there's a major corporation moving in a little tiny town, there's a lot of traffic, and people like to ride, ride around the neighborhood and say, oh, let's see what's around here. There's a lot of kids that live there.
Yeah, no, we hear you.
You don't want to get someone killed.
We hear you.
Thank you for all your hard work that you guys do. Thank you very much. And thank you to the marina. They are a good neighbor. The improvements that they made needed to be made, so I want to thank that. They, I just wish they would consider us just a little. Thank you very much, guys.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Who else would like to come up and speak? If you, if you came and you care, now's your chance. Because when the board says we're closing this to the public, that's it, no more comments, even if you don't like what you're hearing. Anybody else? Anybody waving on Zoom? Okay.
Nazir.
So we.
Hear me.
Nazir.
Nazir.
Yeah, yes, yes. Let me.
Go ahead.
Let me, let me speak my mind a little bit. Couple of things regarding the road. The neighbors should go to the road commissions. We have a road commissions, and discuss this matter with the road commission. If this is a public road, immediately the police can open the road with the DPW, so that's the first thing you have to do, check with the road commissions. If it's a land court road, even if you own both sides of the property, you gotta see, you gotta go back to the deed, see who has interest in that land on that road. You can't even, you don't own it. If someone else has interest in that road, you can't take it, even if you own both sides, if someone else has interest on it. Regarding the dirt, they say, the neighbors, they say they have dirt on top, people put dirt, and the rain and the washes on the road, they have to go immediately to the conservation and have the conservation agent address this matter, and visit the site, and address what's going on. It's very important that. Regarding the traffic, traffic, it is what it is. People don't control the traffic. They could put a couple of signs, like, two square feet, one by two, one by one, and a couple of corners in the summer, to minimize the confusion of the roads. And again, the gentleman who spoke about the temporary racks, I do agree with him, you need a factory specs. And if the factory spec says, these racks needs to be anchored, and they don't anchor them, these are permanent racks. For me, they are permanent racks. If the manufacturer's spec says, we could move them around without being anchored, then I guess they are temporary. So that's where I'm at right now. And about the 45 feet, I'm, you'll hear my vote on that, if it comes for the vote. Thank you. Thanks.
Okay, thank you, Nazir. Thank you. Mr. Al Khalasi, I guess people get upset when we're not too formal sometimes. Okay, any other questions from the audience, any from the public? Anybody on the board like to make a motion to close the public portion of this hearing?
I'll make a motion to close.
Do I have a second on that motion?
Second.
Okay, it's been motioned by Jacob Morrison and seconded by Troy Larson that we close the public portion of this hearing. All in favor, Troy?
Aye.
Miss, miss, miss.
Go ahead, Ma.
Mr. Chairman, like, I, I think we should go into a discussion before we close. I, I object to the closing. There's still a lot of answers, questions need to be answered. From hearing the neighbors, hearing the, those signs, we have to address this matter. But, again, I'm one vote. If you guys choose to close, that's fine. Go ahead, continue with your vote.
Can, can I just interject?
Go. He brought up a discussion, let's discuss it. Go ahead.
So we did have that discussion, and the people went down to charge pawn and talked to the person about the no parking zones, no parking signs, and it's up to them, and they said they weren't interested. So, I mean, anything to do with any signs doesn't have anything to do with us. Because I did request for some no parking signs, and when they came back and said that, and said that Dave Manned from the Highway Department said he has no intentions of putting them up there, then I'm done with it. So the way I see it, if there's any signs to be put up, it has nothing to do with the zoning Board of Appeals.
Did you hear that, Naz?
Yes, I got Chaplain, you mean, yes, that's fine, that's fine.
Just, no, no, no.
No, I, I, I was suggesting a couple of signs, like, like the real estate sign, you throw them in the ground for the summer, that's all.
Disposable, disposable, I get what you're saying. Directional signs that go in the ground with wire and you print 10, you put up three, and when they pull them out, you put the other three up until you run out.
And if it's, if it pisses people off, they just take it out and it's the end of it.
Yeah, I, I get, I get what you're saying, I get what Richard's saying. I saw some, I, I don't know if the attorney in the district, you guys were clearing your throat or had some comment before we close public, because once we close it, even you guys can't talk.
Right.
Later, Jada strikes.
By way of clarification, we have overheard the, the sign discussion, and whatever we can do to place signs in various spots to make things safer, we're happy to do that. We'll even investigate our ability to do that, but I just don't think that this board has that. So we will look into it with the Highway Department, we'll look into it with the Board of Selectmen. We can definitely take some, some steps to see if there's something we can do, just even a sign that says, "This is not Onset Bay Marina," you know, something simple. So we're happy to look into that by way of, you know, background or suggestion.
Yeah, I, I, it's very frustrating. I understand the neighbors, I definitely understand the neighbors' position on this. You know, I literally did go to Onset Bay Marina in the 70s and, you know, two or three owners back, and I was, I was the spoiled kid that got to use everybody else's boat and fuel.
That's good.
But I haven't been there, I mean, when this came in front of the board, I've driven over there four or five times now and, and looked around. That's why I'm able to relate to both sides of this story. I know that people don't go in business, I, I'm sure the neighbors didn't say they don't want you to make a profit. I never heard them say that. I know they said that the more boats you put, the more money you make, and I know that that's the goal of man in business. Anybody that goes in business, goes in business to make money. And the more money you make, the more successful, you know, you're considered a successful business.
Signs help businesses, right? They, they help businesses.
I don't hate people that make money. I, I, but I think that, you know, people, people can make money and become abusive with it, and that, that I find a little bit offensive, but I'm all for people doing a good job. Anyway, any other questions, any other discussion?
Yeah, one more for, as part of the discussion.
You gotta come back up and re-identify yourself, sir.
Bill Bogans, 17 Maple Street. I just wanna say that it's, it's, I think everybody's thinking in their minds that it's just people coming to the marina.
No, they have to get out of there, too.
Well, that, there is so much traffic that comes up out of the marina, comes down Gray Street and goes up Maple, or takes a wrong turn and goes down to the water, but it's not just going in, it's going out as well. I mean, I don't know what can be done about all of that, as opposed, other than one-way signs and those types of things, I have no idea, but it's, it's.
It's beyond, it's beyond this board's ability to, to resolve that issue, but we're certainly glad to have it aired and have the applicant hear it. I think they've said that they'll do whatever they're able to do, but again.
I can tell, I can tell you that whatever happens, people on Cross Street are gonna have more traffic.
Cross Street was the one that I always took, and they're gonna hate you guys because they're not here.
All right, that's all, thank you so much.
Okay, anything else? Anybody else looking up? Oh, it's Rebecca, if I remember correctly.
Rebecca Hemsley, 12 Green Street. I might just echo what everyone's saying about the signage and the traffic, how integral it is to have an impact study. So I don't know if that's a zoning board or what board we would go to request that for the changes, improvements, expansion that's happening there for an impact study, and a Cranberry Highway has undergone extensive commercialized in expansion and impact studies and feasibility studies were done left and right for years. So I'm respectfully asking where we would turn in town to request that for a commercially-zoned abutting residential neighborhood.
I don't, I don't have an answer for you, but we're hearing you, and if the board wants to discuss an impact study, when the board discusses this.
Okay.
Before they vote, they will.
Okay, cool.
Anybody else there with, you know, they're on the fence, they wanna talk, they don't wanna talk, you know, Jimmy Durante, go stay, stay, go. Sometimes you wanna go, sometimes you wanna stay.
Louise Reddy from Tam and Young, 30 Maple Street. I just wanted to note on the application from the petitioner that for their request to the assessors for the abutters, it does say 18 Green Street, Lot 3.
We're well aware of that, we've.
Right, I just wanna say that they.
We've talked that to death, but go ahead.
One lot, but it's the entire property. Just stating that, they only put one lot in there, but their deed, which they submitted to you, has all of the lots on it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I know that's been discussed, but I still don't understand why the whole property, the marina's not on a lot, it's.
I get it.
So I get that, I'm not sure.
The neighbors would lead us to believe that the applicant intentionally limited it to one lot to minimize the number of people that would be notified. The applicant would tell us that they were just doing what they thought was right. We stopped the meeting and we asked that a new list be generated. New letters were mailed. The assessor's office and the planner's office work together, and they're satisfied that they mailed it or included the right people. Whether or not others are satisfied, whether I'm satisfied or you are satisfied, we can all look at this differently. I can see the argument on the neighbor's side that if it's, if it's under one deed, I get it, they're an abutter. I, I can absolutely follow that line of thinking. I can absolutely follow the line of thinking that the assessor and the planner came to. I certainly hope that nobody has such an act to sharpen that they need to take this to Superior Court to decide it. I certainly hope that anybody feels as though they need to speak, we're able to be here. But if one of these people that feel as though they were entitled to be here decides they want to put the marina in a world of hurts, they can certainly file an appeal to any decision, and they can hold this thing up in the court as long as they're willing to pay a lawyer.
So my comment, and that's, I understand that you, you sound like you're addressing the public. My comment is meant for the board.
I know.
And in any of the public that's listening wants to pay attention, that's fine, but the board, as a board member, I think that at some point this should be addressed. I'm not implying that the applicant did anything deliberately, so I just wanna make that clear. But I do think it's something that should be discussed so that moving forward, other applications that are put in and notifications, that it's very, it, I guess, makes sense, because to me, as a board member, that doesn't make sense. When you own a business and it's on a piece of property, it would encompass all the lots, and if it's part of that deed and it has a lot of lots as part of it, it would make sense to all the abutters. So I'm saying for future discussion, as we move forward, that maybe that's something that needs to be discussed as a board.
And I'm with you, and, and we haven't closed the public, and we can keep the public portion of this hearing open, and if you feel it's, if you feel as though there are people that have not been notified, that should have been notified, you can make a motion to continue and, and have those.
I have no intent to make a motion to continue. I feel like this has gone on for quite some time, or having discussion, I'd like to get it discussed.
Yeah, no.
Personally, I, I have not changed my, my feeling, and in fact, it's, what I've heard tonight has simply.
Reinforced.
Solidified what I felt initially, and so I would say that oftentimes when an applicant will come here and they're requesting a special permit or a variance, or whatever it happens to be, we would discuss with the applicant, make some concessions, hear what the neighborhood has to say, what the town would like, and how that might benefit us if we are willing to make some changes. But in this situation, I've heard, you know, so many points of things that aren't necessarily.
Relevant.
Well, they're not relevant, but that being said.
Worth hearing, though.
They're worth hearing, and when an applicant, an applicant comes before the board, just like when you go to build a house at the building department, they don't just say, "Oh, well, this is just about building a building." You have to go to the tax department and everywhere else that seems unrelated. If you have any piece of property you cannot build, regardless if it's unrelated, so just because you're coming for the racks does not mean that we wouldn't look at everything. We could hold up, you know, a special permit for a little tiny thing and talk about all kinds of other things. It just opens up that, I guess, rhetoric. But that being said, I am not willing to grant what's being requested here, so I'm not gonna try and bargain with you, because I, I do think, and it's a very large marina, the village is not big, I do think that the height of the racks, and, and it's your prerogative, as you stated, to put, to go to what is permitted in the setbacks that allow you to put a 40-foot rack, that's your prerogative. If you wanna put a huge gigantic rack on that marina that doesn't seem to set there and, and it just kind of is very large for the property, that's your prerogative. But as a board member, you are not conforming at the 50-feet mark, and I'm not willing to, I guess, overlook that point. It's, you could put what you had, I wouldn't say, "No, you know, put what you had, keep it at 30, we're good," and I, and I'm fine with that. I would say to the neighborhood, you had a lot of relevant points, a lot of people who are intelligent and seem to be able to put into words some of the issues, and then the gentleman that doesn't do email, you guys work together and, and send the notices, find out who you have to send. Each of those bullet points that you presented to us, we care about everything that you're saying. We live here and we care. So I would just say, work together to get each of those bullet points taken care of. They, they don't fall within our jurisdiction, if you will. We can't touch on all of them and solve them, unfortunately.
All right, let's move with the motion, Jimmy.
Okay, so we have a motion that's been made and seconded, there's been discussion. Any more discussion, gentlemen? I hear you chatting. Do you, you see, it looks like you feel you need to say something.
I, I thought that, you know, the application and the materials filed with the application, the presentation that we made and the colloquy that we had with the board addressed the relevant issues that were brought up by the neighbors. However, it does seem that there has been some misstatements that I think my client would like to clarify, if the board, if he would, if we would be allowed to indulge.
We want everybody to have the chance to say what they need to say now, rather than, you know, we don't need to go to a judge and repeat all this.
I would rather not.
Yeah, I'd rather not.
I think that, again, just for my sake, to remind the board that, you know, we're here to apply the bylaw to what is being presented, and if you're unwilling to, you know, I guess if you're just unwilling to consider what the bylaw says and apply it to what is being asked of you, then you're not, you're just, you're not applying the bylaw. In my, my mind, that's the board's obligation. That's what I live by. I create projects that fall within the bylaw. You know, I, I try to look at the bylaw, make sure we fit into some avenue of the bylaw. So that having been said, I think Greg would like to mention a few things about some of the accusations that have been made. Again, I think that our application of materials have addressed the relevant applications to moving, reconstructing the racks, moving them six feet apart, and increasing the height. My, our, our application is pretty tight on how it complies and falls within the guidelines of the bylaw, which I'm asking you to apply. Go ahead, Greg.
Any activity that has taken place down there, we have gone through the proper channels, whether it's a dock expansion, okay, we have gone in front of conservation for this project, for any project, has been permitted by the town and the state.
No, we, I know that, and the board knows that. The board knows that. I see hands coming up over there, anything else?
No, I don't think so. I mean, as far as the separate lots go, I'll just make a quick comment. So sometimes it behooves an owner to not combine lots and keep them separate, because at some point, maybe there's a person that wants to lease that lot and have a marine-related business in the marine district or something like that. So that's kinda why, and that's one explanation, why although they are all listed as separate parcels on a deed, we all know that you can buy four or five houses and have it all be on one deed. You can do that. It's, it's simple, it's just drafting, and this has a whole bunch of parcels or lots on one deed. That's not how the statute works. The statute works from the assessor's parcel, property line of the assessor's parcel, as it is listed in the assessor's records and its street address, so I don't wanna beat a dead horse.
On that, on that matter, and I see hands waving, and I'm gonna get to you folks, on that matter, lots on the assessor's record and, and assessor's maps, and I had this question, and I asked our former town engineer, and he explained it, so that after maybe 20 years, I was finally able to understand it in simple language. The town draws the map and it stays drawn that way until somebody other than the town usually pays an engineer to redraw it and resubmit it and record it, and then the town map gets changed. But that doesn't mean, and the reason I had the question was, because you have to combine lots in order to make them conform when zoning changes. So you buy a house and it's got three lots, and the zoning says 30,000 square feet, and you've got 20,000, well, those three lots are combined, doesn't matter what the towns got drawn, though they're combined. You can't sell, I mean, people do sell them individually, but they're combined, and they stay, and the town sends a separate tax bill on the separate lots until somebody has an engineer redraw it as one lot and record it, and then the town map gets changed. So that's why you see things on the town map, including roads, that never get changed because no private citizen paid to collect, correct the public record. That said, the gentleman way in the back that has been very quiet through the whole meeting, and I appreciated it, wanted to respeak. Thank you, sir.
Frank Ucholi, 1 Maple Ave. If I got this correct, the abutters within 300 feet of where the work is being performed, correct, is, that has to be notified. Now, those two abutters. Within 300 feet of where the work's being performed, is that basically simple? Is that what?
Well, that's, that's the.
Nazir, have Nazir's.
That's the argument that's going back and forth, sir.
Excuse me, excuse me. It's abara to the abara. If the abara to the abara is 50 feet, that's it. If the one abara is 300 feet, that's the person, it's one, 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 one notice. But if, if three abutters are 150, there are only two of them again.
Okay.
Send only abara to the abara, not the third one, even if it's at 101 feet. That's how it works.
Thank you. My point is, they're doing work on the bulkhead, that's what the permit's for, but the dirt from the bulkhead is up on Gray, Green, Green Street, Gray Street?
Right.
Gray Street. So now they're taking the work being performed at this place, moving the dirt up on to Gray Street, now they're infringing, it's like me building a house on my lot, going to my neighbors to build something else, and now they're erecting this platform, this rack, again, not where the work's supposed to be performed, but in the parking lot, with this thing tipped, I can guarantee you, we can knock out one of the houses that is right there on Maple Street. And that's why, again, I have, I would really wish you guys could take a ride down there and take a look. But if work is only being performed in that one spot, which is the bulkhead, then all the other spots, which is separate deeds, should not be having any work performed. Otherwise, those abutters should be.
They're not, that's the point that's been made, and we've, we've talked and re-talked this, and, and we, we recognize that there's a difference of opinion here, we recognize that.
No, no.
And that's, and that's gonna be the basis. If this board finds in favor of the applicant and the neighbors are so aggrieved that they don't like the finding of this board, the neighbors can appeal our decision. If this board makes a decision and the neighbors are all happy and the applicant doesn't like the decision we make, the applicant. the decision we make, the applicant can appeal our decision. And then it goes in front of Superior Court up in Plymouth, and a judge will look at it, and he'll decide whether somebody got notified or didn't get notified, whether somebody didn't dot an i, cross a t, and if it really matters.
I just feel if you're one entity, multiple lots, eventually, I was told, that the town usually combines them automatically. Don't know about that, but anyways, if you're one entity and you're performing work, and all these different separate parts...
You're arguing the appeal, sir.
That everybody should be notified.
You're arguing the appeal.
Okay, let's, sir, yes. Jimmy, if I, sir, you're here, you know about it, that's what matters. Let's move forward with the motion on the table. So you made, Jake made a motion to close. You seconded, Troy?
I told a couple of the people I'd recognized them, Nas, I'm going to let them, because they were waving at me, and I don't think it's just because they like me. Were you guys waving?
Don't beat at that horse, please.
Okay, we're good, finally, thank you. Okay, so we have a motion on the floor by Jake, it's been seconded by Troy. The motion is to close the public portion of this hearing. All in favor, say aye, starting with Troy.
Aye.
Veronica.
Aye.
Jake.
Aye.
Richard.
Aye.
Nazzy.
Aye.
Myself, aye. The public portion of this meeting is closed. Now, any discussion amongst the board?
I would recommend to, for the board, to see if they want to act upon this, upon this hearing as a variance or a special permit.
As a variance or as a special permit?
Right, because Veronica has a mixed feeling, and maybe other members. So we, before we act on it, let's, let's decide if it's a variance, if the board feels it's a variance or a special permit.
Well, I can tell you that the public noticed, asked for a special permit.
Aye. Then, okay, very well. Then Veronica, if she disagrees with the, with the special permit, because I believe it's a special permit, and she wants to deny it, she could deny it based on the substantially detrimental to the neighborhood.
Right, which, which would, that's, so to decide whether it's substantially, there's a detriment to the neighborhood, then it would become a variance regardless if they...
No, that, that's the thing we're missing, Veronica, because it's, that's only applied to one and two families. That, that's a 1350, section 1355, it doesn't apply in this matter.
It says all other structures other than, it does apply. Number four.
Unfortunately, I don't have the book in front of me.
Any proposed change that adds a new nonconformity or aggravates and/or intensifies an existing nonconformity will require a variance from the zoning board of appeals. And this is an alteration or extension of other structures. Does apply.
Okay, if that's the matter, the whole, the whole, the whole application's defective, then, then we have to act on that, then we have to vote on it, and if the vote, it's a defective notice to begin with, if that's the matter. Why don't you call back the commissioner to the table, and that's, it's before we make a motion, if he, if he insists it's a special permit before we make a decision.
The commission is still here, so we can do that, and that's part of our discussion, so let's do it.
And we're going to go by the, by the recommendation of the commissioner.
Do you understand what we're asking you? I'm not sure I do, but...
I'm home after work, huh?
Can you imagine some poor person is here with a separate, whole separate issue, and they've had to sit through all this?
Oh, poor guy.
Go ahead.
So I think it goes back to the original application, right, when they came and were talking, and, and my point was that this is an extension of a nonconformity because of the height, and their premise was...
I disagree with that.
So at the time, last meeting, you, you...
I did, made a mistake.
And so...
The whole board made a mistake, because it was reference, Nazzy referenced one and two families, that height.
Right, for the height, but this is talking about other structures. It's not one and two families. One and two families talks about, has that, right?
Yeah.
So this is talking about, it's an increase or a change to, if you, if you read number four, alteration or extension of an other structure. So if it's lawfully, pre-existing, nonconforming structure, other than a single or two-family residential structure, may be altered or extended, provided that, and on number four...
Where are you now?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm at 1360, page 107.
1361, and then under 1361, there's four conditions.
Yeah, I didn't see it, no.
And then that fourth condition says, "Any proposed change that adds a new nonconformity or aggravates or intensifies an existing nonconformity will require a variance from the zoning board of appeals." They're making this rack larger.
What the nonconformity is, is the distance from the residential zone.
They're making the rack larger, so, right, so the, so...
So there are six, they're roughly six feet now, and they're moving away from it.
Right, but they're increasing...
Making the nonconformity...
They're increasing the structure that is at 16 feet. If they kept it the same size, they're decreasing it. And a special permit, yeah, move it.
But the height shouldn't matter, because it's below the listed amount of 45.
I disagree with that. Any, any height matters if you're not conforming. Any building that you put there, just because it's under 45, they can't put it anywhere they want, because it, because if it's 45 feet is what our law says that it has to be, they're still too close to the setback, so if it has to be a, if, they're still putting something there that's nonconforming, and they're increasing the size of it. If you're increasing the size of something that's nonconforming, you're creating more of a nonconformity.
All right, if I may, let, we're not going to argue. The commissioner says it's a special permit, let's vote among us to decide if it's a special permit or a variance. If the, if the board votes it's a variance, so it's, it's got to go back and be readadvertised and called defective, so let's, let's, Jimmy, pull a vote, get a motion to see if it's a variance or a special permit.
I agree, Nas, I, I, does the rest of the board, where'd Jake go? Did he have to leave? Okay, we need, we need a minute, Nas. We need, we couldn't turn our screen off and run to the bathroom.
He wasn't on it when it started, anyway. He's not a voting member on that matter.
Huh? He wasn't sitting.
Oh, so Troy is sitting on it?
He's not...
He wasn't sitting in the original meeting, so it doesn't matter.
Okay.
He's not a voting member, so let's, let's continue with our, with our business.
Troy sat in.
So who's on, Yaron, Nas?
Yes.
And Richard, Yaron?
Troy and Veronica.
Right.
And Troy, and Veronica, and you, yes.
Okay, so do we feel as though it's a special permit or a variance? What do you call, what do you...
I, I, it's a special permit.
Nas?
Okay, so please, let's pull them, make a motion, Richard. Make a motion, it's a special permit.
I'd make a motion that it's a special permit.
Do I have a second on that?
Second.
Second, made by Ri- Richard, seconded by Troy, that we believe that this is, this calls for a special permit. All in favor, say aye, starting with you, Troy.
Aye.
Veronica?
Nay.
Richard?
Aye.
Nazzy?
Aye.
Myself, aye. You squeaked by.
Yeah.
Special permit.
Okay, now it's a special permit, so how, now, any discussion before that, no word from the public, and no, no more, no more comments from the public, or the commissioner, or the, or the applicant. Let's make a motion among us, if any discussion, only among the board members. What's the board wishes?
So, so I would like to just say, I know how I feel, but I, if some of the board members are going to approve and feel like they're going to, I think that maybe, you know, we should consider, or you should consider trying to get some concessions such as the abrevities, or, I don't know, the, some of the things that have been requested from the neighbors, you know, if you're going to approve, let's put some...
So what you're saying is, you'd like to, you'd like to see a motion made, and you'd like that motion to include some conditions.
To have conditions, yes.
Okay, so, so first, let's come up with a motion. Are we going to move to, again, let's, let's be clear on what we're voting on. We're voting on the permanent racks that have been raised and are being reinstalled brand-new on new, on new, new everything, new, 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 and we're voting on whether or not they should exist.
No, if they, if they're 40 feet or stay at 33 like they were.
Okay, I thought we...
Or whatever they were. We're gonna, we're voting if we allow them to be at 40 feet, only.
That's all we're voting on?
Yes.
Does everybody...
And allow them to exist. I mean, this is the matter. If the board feel not detrimental, then that's allowed. If, and if the, if the board feel it's substantially detrimental, then the board could say no.
Okay, so we're voting on 33 feet to 40 feet. Is that what we're voting on?
Right.
Is that what, everybody...
Yeah.
Agree that that's what we're voting on? Okay.
Counselor, please clarify, is this what's the vote, correct? If it's 30 or 40, right?
By, by way of clarification, Mr. Chairman, the board's voting on the application this evening as it was filed, which is the 6, 6 to 16, 6, because that's the nonconformity that is being changed, as less detrimental to the neighborhood than the 6-foot 6. The 40 feet is not subject to the vote, because it is allowed by right under the bylaw, as we discussed earlier with the commissioner. The, certainly you could make a finding, but the, it's shown on the plan, so if you vote to approve the plans, the way they were filed, then you are voting for the 6 feet to 16 feet, and of course, by implication, the plans show the 40-foot rack, which is allowed in the district, but they're not...
Unless the board has specified, unless the board finds the 40 feet substantially detrimental.
Well, remember, section one of that section, Nazzy, says that if they change the extension in height, complies with the current bylaw, which it does. That's, that's why I'm suggesting it's not, doesn't need to be voted on as part of the application for the special permit.
Counselor for the applicant feels as though he could win in court that argument, that he can go to 40 feet by right, he can go to 45 feet by right. What he's here asking permission to do is move the location of the racks 10 feet away from the property line, 10 feet further from the property. Right now, they're six feet from the property line, he wants to put them 16 feet from the property line, they're moving the setback 10 feet further from the property line. That's what we're voting on.
So the applicant thinks that you can put them to 40 where they are?
No, that's...
Well, you could, based on your premise.
No, I didn't...
Yes.
No, I didn't say that. I said, I said...
I'm just saying that based on what you're saying, you could put them at 40 feet where they exist, without approval from this board.
Yeah, under your bylaw, no, no, that's not, under your bylaw...
With a special permit.
Yes, without approval. The approval of the board is required, because we're moving, you know, moving racks within that 50-foot. You're right, you're right, we could, we could, I wasn't considering it that way, but by way of clarification, under your bylaw, the way it's written, that section applies to the nonconformity, not, not the nonconforming structure, or it's...
Your argument is that you could keep them six feet from the property line and go to 45 feet, you wouldn't even need anybody's okay.
Right.
You just need a building permit, and our bylaw allows that.
Because we're moving them, we may...
But because you're moving them 10 feet...
We fall under your jurisdiction.
You need us to say, "Okay."
Correct.
And that's all this whole thing really boils down to.
Yeah, I know, and I disagree 100% that they are, that that is the case.
So, does anybody care to make a motion?
Make a motion to approve the plans as presented?
The motion has been made by Richard to approve the application to move the racks from 6 feet from the property line to 16 feet from the property line via a special permit. Does anybody want to make any conditions on that move? I think I would like to make a condition on that, if, and see how the board feels about it. I'd grant, but I'd say, subject to the racks not being used on the, on the top layer between November 31st and April 1st. How do you people feel about...
30 days in November.
And...
No, 31. No.
I'm, I'm a little torn, because I think it's either all the time or none of the time.
You feel it's all or none?
Seasonal, that could just get kicked around.
If the, you feel if the, if the marina wants to not use it in the winter on their own decision as a goodwill gesture of the neighborhood, that's up to them, you don't think it's up to us?
I heard both from the neighbors and...
The applicant.
The count, the applicant, that they were willing to do it certain times. I'm, I just find it tough, I mean, to limit something like that. I just think it's either all the time or none of the time. That's my opinion. I'm not trying to coerce anybody, I'm not telling anybody what to do, my feelings are that.
I withdraw my, I withdraw my suggestion for that, for that condition, and so, how about, do we want to restrict the height of the rack to 40 feet? They're allowed 45.
So if we did that, and they wanted to put a taller boat on it, they wouldn't exceed it?
No, the boat's got nothing to do with the rack, we're talking about the height of the rack.
Yeah, I agree, I'm sorry.
The boat that sits on it.
Yep, sorry.
I'd like to restrict it to 33, or whatever it is currently.
You'd like to restrict it to 33?
The height that it currently is.
Do, do, do we have...
I wouldn't take it away from the height.
Do we have four, four people in, in agreement with that?
I'm not.
Okay, we, so that wouldn't carry no matter what, because I wouldn't agree with it, and he wouldn't, you need four of them, so that, that's gone away too. So we're back to the motion in front of the board by Richard.
Jimmy, Jimmy, if I may.
Go ahead.
If I may, I agree with Veronica, be careful if you pull a vote, if it gets denied. I do agree with Veronica's theory of 33 feet, so if you want to grant at 33, amend. If you want to pull a vote at 40, you might not get my votes.
Okay, so now it looks like, did you hear that?
Oh, I heard it.
You got it?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so what's the wishes of the board? Do you want to, his motion is to grant at 40. Do I have a second? It's not getting a second. Would somebody like to make a new motion?
I'll make a motion to grant at 33, current height.
So the motion is made by Veronica to grant a special permit for the racks to be moved from the property line, from their existing 6-foot setback to a 16-foot setback, with the condition that the height of the rack not exceed 33 feet. Do I have a...
Exactly, it's a condition. I have, I second.
You sec, so it's made by Veronica and seconded by Nazzy. All in favor, say aye, starting with you, Troy.
Aye.
Veronica?
Aye.
Richard?
Abstain.
Abstaining. Nazzy?
Aye.
Okay, so I get to make the decision. Aye. You've got your racks, but they're going to be 33 feet.
Thank you.
I think we're done.
Thank you very much.
No, we're not done.
Well...
We're not done.
We're done here.
We're done, but we're not done. Thank you.
A public hearing, is that a public hearing?
There's one more.
Okay.
Well, there is?
Yep.
Oh, wow.
Too bad we didn't have them go first. I thought we were done, I should have...
What was it, 401 at 30, 30 feet? I think it's going to be appealed, but that's, okay, so we have another...
Is it 401 or 410? How does that, I don't know how that goes.
What's that?
Where do you put the abstain? 410 or 401?
The last.
It's the last, it's the last one.
Extension is the last one.
The last one, yep. First is a, is, yeah.
Yeah, 401, that's what I said.
Yep.
Now, keep, keep in mind, the one, the rack in the front, the rack in the front, it could be at 40 or 45 feet because remember, they're renewing the one in the front. The front confirms they have the 50 feet. This is only the one in the back.
It's the only thing we voted on. They could, they could walk out of here angry and go put them up 45 feet and put boats on top of 45 feet. Yes, they could.
Front, front, yes.
Other spots on the property.
Next victim.
Huh? The other permit, uh.
That one is already permitted.
It's already permitted and it's by right. I got you. All right. So, new public hearing, sir. You've sat through quite a discussion that didn't have anything to do with you. This is 1623 Jeffrey M. Shaw, and I need to read it into the record. The zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing on May 24th, 2023 at 6:30 PM in room 320 of the Wareham Multi-Service Center, 48 Marion Road, Wareham, Mass. 02571, to consider petition number 16-23 for a special permit from the requirements of Article 6, Section 613 and 628 under the Wareham zoning bylaws to Jeffrey M. Shaw of 11 Bridgeview Lane, Buzzards Bay, Mass. 02532, proposing to excavate, partial demolish, and rebuild a pre-existing, nonconforming cottage at 11 Bridgeview Lane, Buzzards Bay, Mass. 02532. That appears on assessors map 5 lots 1012 and 1013 in the R43 zoning district. Tell us a little bit about what you're doing, sir.
Sure. Thank you very much. My name is Robert DeWar here with Bracket Engineering. On behalf of our applicants and owners, Jeffrey and Melanie Shaw, I'm just going to hold the board up here so I can point out a few things, if that's all right.
Go ahead.
We have here a pre-existing, nonconforming parcel on 11 Bridgeview Lane. This is sort of behind onset Avenue. The parcel's about 7,781 square feet. And we have two dwellings currently located on the lot. The primary house was constructed approximately 1925 and the smaller cottage, five years before that, in 1920. The applicant, well, before I get to that, I should say that the parcel does lie partially and mostly within a couple of FEMA-designated flood zones, one of them being an AE14 and the other one being an AE50. And the applicant is requesting at this point in time to partially demolish, excavate underneath, reestablish a new flood-compliant foundation, and raise the existing cottage that was constructed in 1920 up to elevation 16.2 above the flood zone elevation. Right now, the setbacks are about 0.2 feet off of the north property line and about 1.2 feet off of the western property line. We are proposing to maintain the 1.2 feet setback, but pulling it about 3/10 of a foot to maintain a half a foot setback from that northern property line. Lot coverage, floor area ratio, all proposed to remain the same. I think that's about it. Trying to expedite this a little bit. At this point, if the board has any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
I got a question. Where in the world is Bridgeview Lane?
It is.
In the Buzzards Bay.
Yeah, it's on onset F, heading, if you're heading outside of.
Just past Pine Tree?
Yes, exactly, Pine Tree.
Pine Tree Lane?
Is it just before the train tracks? You kind of go down and in or?
It's before that, just before, it's in between Pine Tree and that street. Yeah.
Is it like, is it paved or is it?
I don't believe so. No, it's, I think if you were to drive by, you would consider it more just like a private shared driveway.
Looks like a driveway?
Correct.
There's a couple, three houses on it. You go in one way and you come out the other and everybody that lives there goes only one way, but there's no one-way signs.
Exactly.
Okay, I get, I know where it is now, yeah. I just trying to.
Sure.
Any questions?
Did you say you're raising it up?
Yeah, they're raising it. It's about a foot right now, the, the cottage, the first floor elevation is elevation 15.6. They're proposing to raise that up to about 16.2. The elevate, the flood zone elevation is 15. So we ideally like to get that a foot above that for our lowest structural members.
What's the distance between the existing house and the cottage? I can't, is it 4 and 1/2 feet? Is that right? Am I, is that what I'm reading?
That, the 4 and 1/2 feet is the distance from the existing house to that north property line. I don't have a scale available to me right now. It looks like that's maybe about 6 feet difference between the separation from the cottage to the main house. 6, 7 feet, something in that range. I do have some photos on this other side, if you care to see. That shows sort of the proximity from, that's the wall of the main house. And this is the cottage. And there's a, a front porch that, at some point, was partially reconstructed years ago. But you can see the separation is 6 or 7 feet or so.
Is that the fence of the neighbor or of that property?
It's the fence, these 2 and 1/2 feet away.
Yeah, that would be the fence of the neighbor, yep.
Is it even 2 and 1/2? I thought you said 2 and 1/2. And then 0.3?
Eyes, one, where about 1 and 1.2 feet? So just over 1 feet, 1 foot 2 inches roughly from that property line, this property line here.
Foot, it's very close.
And you're, you're on the line on one of them, right? Pretty much, you said you're gonna move it back a little?
Yes, yep, we're gonna move it back. In terms of who constructed the fence, I don't have an answer for you. The fence, it sits essentially on the property line. I'm not sure who constructed it.
I was just wondering how you're gonna work with that, but.
Yeah.
So that's what we got. We got an existing house and an existing cottage. Are the number of bedrooms gonna change?
No, they're not.
Bathrooms?
Nope.
Are you adding a kitchen?
Ah, but there's already a kitchen in it. But we're not adding one.
So you're, you're, you're just, you're taking a pre-existing, nonconforming structure and you're making it taller?
Correct. And that's just to add, just to add a more flood-compliant foundation below it. We're not increasing the height of the structure in terms of stories or roof pitch.
You're not adding more square feet, you're just getting it up out of the flood?
Exactly. We have gone through conservation. We do have an order of conditions for the project as well. The property is serviced by a septic system that was installed approximately 2001.
Shared with the main house?
Shared with the main house, but designed in, in accordance with Title V regulations.
So for clarification on the movement of the cottage, you're not moving anything back? You're moving it towards the water?
Correct. It moves about 3/10 of a foot, which is about 4 inches closer to the water.
But you're not going back, you're coming away from?
Correct, yep. We're decreasing the nonconformity, if you'd say.
I know personally, you, you have to redo the foundation and everything anyway. So I, personally, I'd like to see it move just a little bit more so that you had.
If they moved it anymore, they'd be marrying.
I don't know, that's just my thought.
That's okay, I'm joking, okay.
It's real, I mean, it's on the line. 0.3 is on the line, basically. And I just like, if, 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 if they have to demolish the foundation anyway, I don't think it's adding an expense. It's making a small concession to try and get it off of the property line, basically.
One of the issues with that is that it does begin to impede with the setbacks to the septic tank that is located to the south of the foundation, right here. If we move it any closer, we start to violate the Title V setbacks.
So what's, what's the distance from the, so, so the septic is?
It would be 10 feet from a crawl space type foundation that we are proposing here, really any, any foundation system for a septic tank.
And what's the distance right now?
I just, they'd be proposing it up to about 10 feet. And then the, and be, and from a constructability, that's from the foundation itself.